Okay, we're all here for the call to order. I have, wait, we have order, please? Thank you.
Uh, Capiello?
Gibson?
Secosha?
Bailey, aye.
Mancheck? All right, uh, so we all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Review of the agenda. Any? Any comments, changes, accepting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 11th, uh, 2022 agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. All those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is there. Um, the first item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is public comment. For many of you have not been here to our meetings before, would refer you to the public comment session. This isn't required, public comment isn't required by statute, but it's been a longstanding practice in Barrington to allow for public comments, uh, at our select board meetings. Anyone, any citizen of the town is welcome to comment. We try to limit this, we'll limit it to 15 minutes total, and because I see a number of people, I assume a number of you will want to speak, we'll limit it to three minutes per person. So if you would, um, like to speak, uh, in public comment, if you'll come to the seat so that our, uh, audience and the people that are not here can see you on television as well, give your name and your address.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If, if people can't hear us, can they turn around and raise their hand and let us know? We can change the volume up so the people in the back can hear us.
Okay.
Thank you. That was the comment we had last two minutes.
Okay.
Two meetings.
I was gonna say, I didn't hear.
No, I didn't hear the meeting yet.
And if you're, yeah, anyone in the back of the room, can everyone in the back room hear? Thank you.
And if you're participating virtually and you'd like to make a public comment, you can raise your hand using the Teams feature, or if you're on your phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself, speak up, wait to be recognized by the chair. Be another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. I see anything virtually, Mr. Chair?
None's coming in virtually. I don't see anyone offering to speak. In that case, uh, in a couple of minutes, um, we'll close public comment and go on to public hearings. Uh, the first item under public hearings is the school board liaison report. That's usually given by either the chairman of the school board or the liaison. Neither of whom are present at this time. They've asked to be excused this time, so we'll move on to, to a tactical, Mr. Russell.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me out. I really put this on the agenda. Appreciate it. Try not to hit the microphone this time.
Yeah, please, it throws the people at home up.
She's just gonna assist me with some stuff. Darlene is, works for us. Mike. Um, the first thing I just wanna, I mentioned this last night to Chairman Dan. If I address you by your first names, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. Sometimes it's easier for me. I, I do legitimately have some memory issues. When I handed out the Robert Russell 99 Tolan Road.
Thank you.
And I will sit in just one second. When I handed out the packets last week, we inadvertently gave you ones that did not have page numbers. That was an accident. These packets are identical. There have been no corrections or changes in any way. Six, seven, and since, so if you don't mind handing those out, Darlene? Is that all right?
Go ahead.
Since I'm gonna be?
Mine do have.
Oh, yours do?
Mine has numbers also.
Oh. Well, I guess I, okay, get an extra one now.
Are there additional, I mean, we've had, sorry Connor, we've had plenty of opportunities, I think all of us.
I thought yours did not have page numbers.
That's fine.
If they do, that's great, because I'll be referencing some, uh, some page numbers.
Is there anything you're going to add to the comments? All received here.
Yes, a lot.
Okay. Actually, the one you gave me, oh, that, it does. Apologize.
If you're a participant in the virtual meeting and you have your video feed on, uh, it can be seen in the feed. You might want to turn it off. If you, if you press the camera icon, the upper right next to the microphone icon. Fortunately, that's not something we have control over. All right, I'm ready to begin. Sorry about that. A little bit of paperwork shopping. Okay, um, first of all, thank you for allowing, again, me to be here. Um, I am the owner of Two A Tactical in Barrington, also co-located at 99 Tolan Road. I, I just want to read a quick quote. It's very short, one line, uh, before we get started. "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to stand idle." John Stuart Mill said that. I want you to understand that I'm not here out of vengeance. I'm not here out of revenge. I am only here because I want to do what's right, and I want to serve the greater good. I believe that right needs to be done tonight. And what happened the last year and a half to my business, I know was not right. I had actually requested to go into a private session with you all, and I was told I couldn't do that because I had questions I had to ask. So essentially, this is the venue that I have to ask questions after waiting about a year and a half to speak to you all. I know that, uh, Dan Mancheck and I had talked, and he was asking if I could do it in 15 minutes. I absolutely do not believe I can do this in 15 minutes. I am not going to sit here and read this report to you. I, I would trust that you have all read it, but the report did not enable me to ask you questions. Now, I know some of these questions you may not answer, and I respect that. And again, I know there's some, uh, for Bob and Joyce, you weren't even involved in this. So, um, you know, that's, that, that plays a role. And Dan Mancheck came in partway during it, so, um, and George Bailey even, uh, recused himself during part of it, and I, and I believe, uh, you as well. So, um, Jim Secosha, sorry, it takes me a second sometime. So it, it's kind of a, uh, a little bit of a broken board, not broken and guys are doing anything wrong, but there's a lot of different levels as to where you are all at with this, okay? But I have lived this for the last year and a half. So I just asked it, you give me the time to ask these questions, um, because I, I spent probably 50-plus hours typing this up, and I did it with attempting to put everything in as a factual, as a factual basis. I was a police officer for 14 years. Um, I tried to write it most like I would do an investigative report. I kept diving into things, and I tried to keep everything without emotion, and again, just as factual as possible. If, if you would like to know where you should take this investigation, I implore you to let me have enough time. So anyway, the only way we can do that is to get started, so, um, why don't we proceed? I did tell Dan this, and I don't want you to take this as wrong. Um, you can understand I may be a little defensive after the last year. I'm not here, by the way, to argue the 7.3. I'm not even gonna bring it up. We're, we're well beyond that. I'm, I'm here to discuss what happened after, um, what happened with certain individuals in the town, okay? So I'm not here to tell you why I should have eight employees or zero or any of that, okay? But I am going to say this for the record. I believe that some government malfeasance, and I know what that word means, and some serious acts of unethical acts, and of the, and of egregious nature took case, uh, were done. And several years ago, as a police officer, I was a single whistleblower in a large attorney general's investigation. I had no trouble doing that. So I am saying it right now. If I feel that this and the other people that support us feel that this.
That was the fire chief.
Okay, no, I, I'm just looking back. Um, again, I'm just stating this. If, if, if this is a wash, if, if I feel that you guys are just protecting your own and simply gonna wash this over, um, you know, for the sake of the old boys' network, I will walk this up to Concord, and I will make AG's complaint.
Point of order, uh, point of order. I would like to have the, there's no accusations. He's here to present something. He's not here to make accusations other than what is written in this report.
This, this is not a trial.
I'm stating what I will do if I feel that you take, uh, unethical and, and incorrect action based on the law and based on the ethics that you all are trained in, um, per the state of New Hampshire, per the guidance for the select board. This is what I'm saying. Okay, let me continue. All right. This is an easy one. Connor, do you believe in keeping the people of the town of Barrington safe?
This is, this is to be directed to you.
I'm asking Connor this.
I heard you, but you came here to ask questions in select.
No, but I also came here to ask him several questions.
That wasn't what.
He's a big boy. He makes good money. He should be able to.
I object. I'm sorry, that, that was not what we had agreed upon.
That's not, we didn't agree upon that. I said I was here to get answers for questions.
And you need to ask questions of the select.
I, I, I don't, I don't feel that's correct. I have a simple, several simple questions for our town administrator. He should not be hiding behind the board.
This, this.
He is appointed by the board.
That's correct, and therefore we, we should be the ones, if you want to ask questions, questions, go to the board. That was what you asked to do.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask it, and then you can not reply, but Connor.
If I may, I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Russell. I was just gonna say, as I did last time, I'm happy to answer the questions that you have. In writing, I followed up.
They need to be done in a public forum, and this is the forum.
You're welcome to make them public, uh, but I think that's the, I mean, my job is to advise the select board and community.
And you're doing a very poor job at it. So we need, we need to start with some very simple questions.
I stand by my statement. I'm happy to answer your questions in writing.
Okay, so you're not gonna answer simple questions now in front of your constituents?
Excuse me, no, no.
Constituents.
Mr. Russell, please, you came here to address the select.
That's not what I said. I said I came here to get questions answered, sir.
You came to the select board to get questions answered. Please ask your question.
Okay, let me ask you, Dan Mancheck, does Connor believe in keeping the people of the town of Barrington safe?
I believe he does.
Okay. Does Connor know what an automatic weapon or a machine gun is?
I don't know.
Why don't you ask him? I can't ask him. Can you ask him?
I'm not at this point, no.
Okay, Dan, would you and I agree that a machine gun can be an inherently dangerous weapon?
Certainly is.
We've both served in, in the service. All right. I'm gonna type, I'm gonna read a hypothetical letter that I'm sending to Connor, but I guess I'm gonna read it to you, and you can read it to Connor. "To Connor, I have a very serious concern regarding one of my neighbors. I have two kids, and Tolan Road is a very nice area. My kids are afraid of being outdoors and going around the neighborhood due to the daily shooting practice of single and automatic firearms. At my neighbor, John Jones, is home at 100 Tolan Road. Sincerely, and best regards, Robert Russell, 99 Tolan Road." So I just sent that letter to Connor. My children are too afraid to go outside due to daily semi-automatic and machine gun fire in a compact neighborhood. What would be the appropriate response to that, uh, letter?
Initially, the, the town has no ability to make laws referencing weapons. That's a state law.
No, the man is saying his children are too afraid to go outside. It's a dangerous situation. This is a life safety situation. So he, he gets this email. What does he need to do with this email?
He probably should investigate it.
Okay, who would be the investigative official who would handle firearms-related investigations in Barrington?
Police.
Okay, so when I worked for the city of Dover, the city manager would periodically get emails of various things. Could be shooting, it could be drug deals. They just would happen to go to the city manager. He would immediately forward those to the police chief with an immediate follow-up call. What I just read to you is almost verbatim of the two letters that Mr. Cardero mailed to Connor, which were both filed in the official documents as complaints, okay? That he is too afraid to put his children outside due to machine gun fire daily, okay? The back of his house, the back of my house points at the back of his house. We live less than 500 feet from each other. And yet, I could tell you what Connor didn't do. He didn't report it to the police, that I discovered through the 91A, and I spoke personally to one of the most respected police chiefs in the state, Chief George Joy, and he never reported it to the police chief. The other funny thing is for someone that was firing machine guns every day, not a single other neighbor complained. They're loud. So the question begs, why would our town administrator not contact the police chief? And by the way, say I was acting extremely negligent and firing machine guns daily in my backyard in a compact neighborhood, and our town administrator did not report that to the police? And say a child took a bullet. Can you imagine the liability on the town for ignoring not one, but two emails? It's a really easy question. Can you imagine the liability on the town?
Yes.
It would be huge, right? I mean, I would be arrested.
Excuse me, Mr. Russell, I'm gonna interfere on this. He answered your question by giving you a yes. Please move on to your next question.
This is a really big deal, Mr. Bailey.
It is a big deal. And I'm well aware of it, but what I'm saying to you, sir, is he answered your question, so please go to the next question.
Not quite done with this question. Here's, here's why he did.
Asking another question.
No, I, well, I am.
Thank you.
Here's why Connor did not report it to the police. Because our police chief would have conducted a proper investigation. He would have spoken to Mr. Cardero, and he would discover that it was a bogus claim. And then one of the several precious letters that were backing up a failed lawsuit would have gone away. Not a single other neighbor complained firing machine guns in a compact neighborhood, and he doesn't report it to anyone. He tucks it away in a file for the lawsuit, and Mr. Cardero sent that letter again in October of 2021. He sent it twice, the same letter, with the same concerns. Okay? He lied, I believe. And that's why Connor didn't have it investigated, because it would have clearly been found unfounded. In fact, possibly, Mr. Cardero would have been found for filing a false police report. And it would have hurt the case. I cannot believe, I cannot believe how much of a big deal that is. And Connor is an intelligent man, and he knew exactly what he was doing. All right, let's keep going. We're on a roll. Um, folks, if you can please turn to page 34 and 35 in your books here. And, and I'm appalled that he won't respond. I'm absolutely appalled in writing, after you talk to the town attorney. You can get someone killed by not handling emails like that.
Mr. Russell, Mr. Russell, please keep your comments to yourself that do not pertain.
That's a factual comment.
To, to this document.
I have young children.
Please, I know the document's in here, but some of the comments you're making outside of the document are not called for. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair.
It is reckless.
You said we're going to 34 and 35.
It is reckless. Okay, are we on 34 and 35? All right, so this was a briefing that Connor gave the board of selectmen. Now, you'll notice that I highlighted a few areas. In this, in this briefing, uh, that would, that is, uh, dated March 5th of 2021, Connor brings up all of these parking complaints. He brings up, um, all these issues, all these complaints from neighbors. At this point, we had six glowing letters of support from my neighbors had been submitted, and they're in the 91A, and they're dated prior to this letter. And yet, not one of them is noted. When he briefed the selectmen, he is supposed to be the conduit of accurate information to the board. Okay, you all don't work full-time. He does. So you're supposed to be able to trust him to give you accurate and up-to-date information. And he provides you with a document that, in my opinion, only contains the negative information. He doesn't reference a single, a single letter we got. We end up getting a total of 11 letters of support. This is gonna come up later, 11. All right. The other thing about this is it talks about parking, 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 parking. There's a serious item that is missing in this report. We had pulled a 91A with the Barrington Police Department with Chief Joy and requested any and all parking or traffic relating complaints since the inception of my business in 2015. And Chief Joy reported back that there was a whopping zero parking complaints. Okay, I'm not making this up. You can read his report. Why is that report not in here? We're, we're, we're weighing heavily on all these parking complaints, and yet nowhere in here does it reference Chief, Chief Joy's report. And that report would absolutely be, be a, should be a substantial part. He shouldn't just be portraying the negative. He should be showing the entire picture. Is that, is that accurate? Should you be given the entire picture? Can I ask the board that? Should, should, I'm not saying he didn't. I'm asking the question is, should the town administrator give the board the, the entire accurate picture? I'm asking a question.
Yes.
Yes. Well, he's not.
There were additional complaints about the business violating the aspects of the home occupation license, and then you met with, um, Mr. Hutchins to discuss those, correct?
There's a lot on here. You want to read the whole thing?
I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I did.
And, and it was agreed, you and Mr. Hutchins agreed that, that you would get into conformity with the home license that had been issued on in 19.
Home occupation.
2018. And you, you'd agree that you weren't in compliance at that point.
I'd agreed on one thing, that we had too many employees. That was found out later that we didn't because of the way the ordinance was written. And remember, we went before the ZBA twice, and we won twice. We didn't require a variance.
But this is, exactly, but this is before that, because.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm asking about other things here. Uh, I, I, we want to talk about the 7.3.
No, no, we don't.
I'm asking why the letters of support, and I'm asking why Chief Joy's, I, I believe you're trying to redirect, sir, and I'm, I'm asking you, why was Chief Joy's letter not in here, his, his report about no, zero traffic issues? And why were the six letters from my direct neighbors, several abutters in fact, not included in this report? You should be expecting accurate and correct and honest information, and you should trust him that he's giving it to you. You're acting very defensive. You should be seeking truth, sir. I'm giving you the truth.
Mr. Chair, can I speak in general terms about something?
Yeah, please.
I, I think in the, in the big picture of complaints and zoning enforcement, I think it's important that residents, both that might have complaints made against them or residents that are interested in making complaints, understand something that's really important, and that's that if somebody makes a complaint, whether it's a zone, zoning violation or code violation, junkyard, things like that, the town doesn't rely exclusively on what somebody that makes a complaint or multiple of the people that make a complaint say. That's not the town's role. The town's role, we have a code enforcement officer who independently reviews the concerns and makes decisions about the course of action based on what he learns, about, based on what he understands about a situation. And so the, the, the process of having a complaint and coming to that conclusion, once the code enforcement officer comes to conclusion about a potential violation, the, the complaint and additional complaints are largely irrelevant.
Okay, but the board of selectmen can.
Excuse me, sir, please, Mr. Russell.
Please try.
Please, please don't interrupt. We're not interrupting you. Please don't interrupt someone speaking.
Just in conclusion, what I wanted to say is that the, when a situation, when a, uh, enforcement action goes to the zoning board for review, that's a different venue when letters of support and letters of concern are, it's the appropriate venue for those letters of support and concern. And so all letters of support and concern were available in the public docket for the, for the zoning board, and that's the, uh, that's the process. But I think the, in, in general, I think it's important, and the town's not always gonna get it right when it comes to enforcing zoning, but it's important to know that the, the code enforcement officer does his best to identify potential violations and rely on that information, um, to go through a process towards compliance. And, uh, you know, my experience is John's great at working with folks in coming into compliance, providing education, coming. And, and so I think that's an important point, uh, that, like I said, folks, whether their neighbors are, are making complaints against them or if they're interested in making a complaint, I think that's important to know. their neighbors are, are making complaints against them or if they're interested in making a complaint, I think that's important to know.
Talk like a politician. I, I asked you why the support letters weren't in here? Even if they're irrelevant, why are they not in here? And why is Chief Joyce's report not in here?
Because that was not what this letter was about.
This letter is all about parking. There is so much about parking in here. And, and why would Chief Joyce's report not be in here? There is a constant note about parking. The town received numerous complaints from residents about the parking on Tolan Road. The, the, the town administrator zoning, they, they talk constantly about parking. I mean, if I search this document for the word parking, it would probably come up more than the word is. And what I'm trying to say is that document should have been in this. And so should the letters of support. Let's move on because you're not giving me an adequate answer and that's fine. Um, we'll move on. Um, I would like to call Chief Joy up front as I have a question for him.
Uh, I don't believe I don't believe that's
No, just a minute. It's just the chief, please hold on.
Yeah. This is, this is your presentation.
Where did the, the chief was here? Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait till later. No, I get
This is, this was set up, Mr. Russell, for your presentation, not for you to conduct an inquiry.
This is George, this is very serious.
Sir, please, may I finish, please? I know it's serious. I've read the document twice to make sure I understood most of it. I just
There's a lot, there's a lot.
There was a lot to, for me to digest. But what I'm saying is you asked to speak to this board. It's not a chance for you to have an inquiry. It's for you to speak to the board on what you want to talk about, what, what you put into this document and some information as the chair had asked you. Do you have other information?
Let me explain.
Yes.
There is a line in here that Connor stated that George Joyce said that he did not say.
You and I have had a good relationship.
We have a great relationship.
But please let me say to you, allow me to finish.
I am calling George Joyce up here to question.
This is not, this is not
What are you afraid of?
Well, this isn't supposed to be a trial.
It is in a trial, but I have been on trial for the last year and a half, to be clear. My business, my employees, we have been on trial. And our livelihoods have been threatened every day, every day. I am asking, when George Joyce gets off a call, to come forward because there is something in here that is documented that he said that he did not say. And you should be very concerned about that.
Well, again, we're not actually trying to conduct a trial here.
It's not a trial. I'm simply going to show him a document and ask him, did you say that line? And I'm going to ask him for a response.
It's not acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
What's going on here? What, why can't I do that? This is your chief of police. I want to ask him one question. If he said something in a document that Connor MacGyver typed up.
You're, you're suggesting that there's a document here which you will probably reference at some point.
I'm not suggesting, it happened.
Well, you're going to show us this document. If we need to, we will ask Chief Joy about that.
No, it needs to be done in a public forum because you didn't allow me to do this in a private forum. You said this was my only recourse. So I am here. This is the here and now, sir. Okay? You, you, you should be so concerned about what has been going on that you should welcome Chief Joy to come forward. This is one of the most respected police chiefs in the state. You should welcome him to come forward and say, yes, I either said that or no, I didn't.
Mr. Mancheck, as a matter of efficiency, do you mind?
Go ahead.
So I, I believe what Mr. Russell's talking about is I sent in an email update to the select board. I, I sent and indicated that the, myself and some department heads had talked about the parking issues after a, a July meeting of the road agent and the building inspector with the business owner. And I had indicated that the department heads in this email chain had acknowledged that it hadn't gotten better. Um, the, the parking, the parking and traffic issues hadn't gotten better. And I included the police chief in that list because the police chief in that single email thread that happened um, responded to an email from, uh, Peter Royce, who exclaimed that the, um, the parking issues hadn't gotten better. And the police chief said that he felt like Mr. Royce's concerns were well-founded. And if I read that, um, to conclude that the police chief was acknowledging that his concerns that parking had gotten better were well-founded, I mean, included him in that list. My intentions were certainly not to put words in the police chief's mouth. Um, but it was, you know, simple, the, the email thread. I don't know if that was one of the ones that was received in the right to know request that wasn't in the report. Um, but there's an email thread that, um, is all public information where the police chief acknowledges that Mr. Royce's concerns were well-founded uh, regarding the parking. And I included the police chief in, in the list of those who didn't think it had gotten better.
So that email you're referencing is one of the first emails in the entire ninety-one A. And when I showed this document to Chief Joy, he said he was very concerned.
I think we should move on, Mr. Chairman.
He's not here and we will talk to him separately.
Okay, all right, let's continue. All right, if you can, um, turn to page fifty-seven. Okay. Exhibit eight. This was, uh, sent to, by the town attorney. This is sworn in to the Stratford County Superior Court. This is a photo that came off our social media, our Facebook page.
Number of pages, I'm sorry.
Uh, fifty, fifty-seven.
Thank you.
And it didn't have any, uh, explanation as to what it was, except that it said it came from our Facebook and/or webpage, which is accurate. I'm quite curious. I mean, you've all read this report now. You, the gig's up. Why was this, who, who provided this photo to the town attorneys?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Before, before the chair decides to answer the question, is this part of the documents that were stuffed in people's, your neighbors' mailboxes? Is that where this came from? Do, I, I don't know. I kept reading in here several instances where there was items put in neighbors' boxes. I just wonder if that was one of them. I couldn't find where this came from.
That, that, this document is in the document I issued to all of you. Page fifty-seven.
You have to, you have to understand, as, as a member of the ZBA, I did not participate with the, uh, select board.
I, I, I gave the town hall seven copies. They were supposed to go to all of you. So the sixty-two page document, page fifty-seven has this.
Mr. Russell, I'm asking you, is this one of the documents they put in the post-up, in the post boxes of people that live on the street? That's the only thing I'm asking.
What does that have to do with this?
Well, I just curious because there's mentioned here that there was some information put in people's boxes. They didn't want it, so I was just asking about.
I don't know what, why you, what that is, what the
Okay, that's fine. I accept that. Thank you.
What I'm saying is this was part of the official lawyer packet. And this was exhibit eight.
Thank you.
And I, I'm asking who took this picture off my social media or was provided it, but who then forwarded it to the town attorneys? Do we know?
I don't know.
Okay, is it that lackadaisical? Like how, how do we get, we've got a slam dunk, uh, you know, lawsuit? How, how do we get exhibits? Exhibits are evidence to be used at trial. So who said this is something, you know, you blow up on a big picture, you go to Staples, look at this ugly thing that's sitting at ninety-nine Tolan Road, except it wasn't. It's sitting at Bumford Road where it's always been. It's an ATF type four powder bunker. Yeah, it looks ugly. I bought it from Riley's in Hookset. It's eighteen tons, thirty-six thousand pounds. It cost me more to move it from Hookset than it cost me to buy the thing. You drive down Bumford Road, if you leave here and you drive down Bumford Road, just before you hit Lindsey's place, it's there on the left. What advance, why would town put this photo in the official documents in the lawsuit? What relevance does it have that we put a thirty-six thousand pound container on our nine acre property up the road? Because what it looks to me like is someone found some ugly photos and put them on because it looks ugly and oh, Rob's got that in his backyard on Tolan Road? So again, I'm asking, who put this, submitted this to the town attorneys?
I, I assume the attorney did that, but
So the attorney, the attorney, typically attorneys don't do that.
I have no idea where it came from.
Well, I need to know.
Mr. Chair.
Maybe.
Honestly don't know the answer, but in general, if the, uh, town attorney is asked to pursue a, a code enforcement action, um, and prepare legal documents for it, uh, the code enforcement officer and the attorney will sit down and um, identify whatever to include in there. And so I think it's reasonable to think the attorney could have done it um, in, in collecting information, um, at the, in support of the enforcement action.
Okay, so they're not, they're not vetting these pictures. They're not actually, I mean, I could put a picture up of a bunch of hazardous waste sitting next to some drums and I imagine they would tag that and they attach it to the
Russell, that's not a fair question. That's not a fair question.
This is not at my business.
All right.
We the chair has stated, he's not sure where that came from. It could have been put in the packet by the, could have, not was.
This misrepresented.
And he's, he's answered as best he can.
It misrepresented my business.
You're trying to make an ass out of me. You're doing a good job. I'll give you that credit.
I'm trying to show why the town
Thank you, Mr.
by certain people in the town did a calculated effort of malfeasance and, and gross unethical acts to destroy my business. We're not talking small, small things here.
Your business is closed?
To try to. No. We are moving on and pushing on. All right, let's go to page fifty-nine. Let's talk about more about how sloppy this lawsuit was. Page fifty-nine, we have another picture. This was also sworn to in front of the Stratford County judge. It also says this photo came from my website and/or Facebook. Okay, this is satellite imagery. We'll start with that. This is from Google Earth. This picture, we believe, I believe in looking at it, was from our two thousand nineteen pig roast. Okay? Now, this photo was never on our website and it was never on our Facebook. That's my first big concern because in the affidavit under, um, exhibit D, which is this item, they swore to that this photo came from my website and/or social media. It did not. And you can even go on one of those things where you could look up old stuff to see if we erased it or some crazy thing. We never put this photo on any of our sites. So I asked the question again. Who gave this photo? Or why did the town attorney snip a photo that they knew did not come from our website? And here's the other thing. When you read the description, there are signs throughout the tent and the backyard. See materials attached as exhibit D, taken from Two Eight Tactical's website and Facebook page. This is a once a year event. We get special permitting from the town. We hire a police detail, occasionally a fire detail. We get a parking variance. This is trying to suggest that my backyard looks like this every day. This is a pig roast. We set up a bunch of tents. One day. How dare the town try to mislead the public with this photo? And you know what? If the town attorney messed up, then maybe you need to find a new town attorney because we've already found two issues here and I'm not even done. Okay, they swore before a judge that this came off our website and/or our Facebook. It did not.
Chairman, well, Mr. Chairman, may I remind the board and the chair is that we're here requesting Mr. Russell, Mr. Russell has asked us to be here. Sounds to me, my personal opinion of this is Mr. Russell's trying this again. I don't think it's ever been tried, but it sounds like he's trying to try.
Trying this, I, I have, we have been tried.
And I furthermore just think that's the way it is. And I think he needs to understand that he should be asking questions, not retrying.
I asked the question, where did this come from? Who submitted this photo?
The attorney submitted this whole file.
Okay.
Came from.
So why did your attorney misrepresent my business?
I'll have to ask. Don't know the
And is there recourse? Or is it just, ha, ha, we found this. We thought it would support this lawsuit better?
We'll have to consult the attorney. I don't, I can't answer your question.
Let me ask you something.
Don't know the answer.
Let me ask you something. If what I'm saying is true, if this photo never came from my website or Facebook, okay, and they're trying to say that this is the normal state of my backyard, can you understand how that is a gross misrepresentation of my business?
I'd have to, as I said, I
If everything I'm saying, I'm asking you a question, Dan.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to your question. If
If this photo did not come off my website or my Facebook and they're trying to say that this is this normal state of my backyard, which it couldn't even be farther from the truth, if this is true, would you not agree with me that that is a gross misre, can I get someone else to agree? Bob Joyce?
You have to put your questions through the chair, sir.
That, that's all right. If they can answer the question, I don't if they can answer the question, I don't know the answer to that.
Because we have to figure it out. I don't, I have nothing to offer you.
Taking care of your own. All right, we're going to go to the next document. And this one's a zinger. So we've been talking about having things on websites and just portraying, um, certain things that you want the town to see and the board of selectmen to see. Well, I just figured this out today. Every time I jump into this rabbit hole, it gets deeper. Can you pass these out to the whole board and Connor? Can she approach?
Go ahead.
Audience, you can follow along with this one. This is the two pages. Yeah, don't trip on that again, please. All right, thank you, Darlene. All right, so on page one, this is a, uh, when we did our second right to know request, okay? This is the first page that I received from Connor dated Wednesday, March twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two. Um, there's a bunch of stuff on here. The part that is important is highlighted in yellow. In fact, I want to ask a question. On the town's ZBA uh, website, who, who, uh, maintains that?
Yes.
The Land Use Office, the administrative assistant and the planner typically.
They, okay, thank you. So, uh, when you sent me, when Connor sent me the second, um, data dump from the second ninety-one A request, it says under section one, all records of the ZBA docket, and that's our docket, are publicly available at, and it's got the thing and it's fifty-four sixteen. Well, let's look at the second page now. This just got brought to my attention today. So I really had to, uh, add a lot to this to show you guys, uh, what's wrong. So as we would continue on in the ZBA process, um, it didn't matter what month you click on, they would add to this list, okay? So as new documents were added, they would, they would add more documents. So as new documents were added, they would, they would add more documents.
Chair, we have these documents. Are you providing us with these documents you're talking about, please? Do you have them for us? Besides a list of them?
No, they're on your website. Those are on the ZBA website. So. Okay, I don't either. If I can explain. So what I didn't realize at first, I see all these things and I see a butter letters and other things and we have. Where where did they go again? We have eleven letters that have submitted by our attorney of support, eleven. And I thought the town only had four letters against. It turned out I was wrong. Because I didn't know I had to look in here to see the other letters. I didn't realize that. If you look at when it says ninety nine road a butt and it's got a number that's a date. So the ones that are highlighted in red have the name and the address of the the neighbor who filed the complaint. Now you gotta understand, this document, this is where the public goes to get their information on our case, okay? Most common citizens don't do a ninety one A request, okay? They might, but the average citizen does not. So they're going to go on this and they're going to click down this list. And when you click, of course, the hyperlinks open up. Well, these letters, if you click on it. Letters open up, okay? A letter for or against. Well, as I dove into this, I realized it was a massive issue. And by the way, there's no second page. There's no scrolling here. This is everything. There are seven letters against, except Gary Embry is listed twice with the same letter. So and then when I say the same letter, it is the exact same letter. It is a complete duplicate. So the layman would probably think there are eight letters against. Those are all in red. And we have one single supporting letter out of these eleven is listed on this ZBA site. It's from our very nice butters across the street, Chet and Linda Cole. This is a huge issue. And again, this just came to my attention today. So the common citizen would go on here. And if they didn't know about other letters of support and if they maybe were skimming and thought both of Gary Embry's letters were separate letters, they would think we had eight neighbors against and one neighbor for. And yet Connor very specifically says all records of the ZBA docket are publicly available at this link, all records. If you know anything about percentages, and I'm not a mathematician. What this means is that is a ninety one percent failure rate to post the eleven letters of support. It's actually ninety point nine. But I'm I'm gonna, you know, make it ninety one. A ninety one percent failure rate. But there's another flip side to that. It's a hundred percent success rate in listing the letters against. If if they missed one, two of our letters for us, you know, you could always blame that on, you know, fat fingered keystrokes or something like that. But how does someone miss ten out of eleven support letters? But get every single one of the letters against correct and actually duplicate one? Is is this possibly an issue?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
May I have a question first, please?
Absolutely, yes, please.
On your request for, on your ninety one A request, you specifically asked for these. I haven't seen your ninety one A.
It did because.
Let me finish.
Okay, George.
Ninety one A because I had to excuse myself because ZBA is not. And I just want to know, was, is this information requested under that?
It was, it was all records of all types, yes.
Okay, that's thank you.
And Connor actually references it by saying to go to this. So I'm saying, how can they get this so wrong?
But he referenced, he referenced these other ones that weren't printed and sent to you, correct? You just said he referenced this list, this list you have here, because these are the ones he didn't copy and send to you? Is that what you're telling me?
But hold on. What I'm saying is all of these letters here are in the ninety one A. Okay? But ten of these eleven letters are not on the public ZBA site. And this is where by and large, the public of Barrington, if they wanted to be reading about and tracking this case, would go for their information because the greater public does not do ninety one As. And Connor is very specific in stating that all documents, all documents are not here. Ten of my eleven supporting letters are missing. But all of the against letters aren't. So how can someone be so inept to miss the ten out of eleven, but get the letters against correct? Do you see the portrayal that this would give in the in the public eye? Dan, you're an intelligent man. Can you see how this could cause a problem?
Mr. Russell.
Let me answer first. May I answer?
Absolutely.
The I think the, I don't think that's. I would like to know why those letters aren't on this particular list. I would point out that public isn't the one that's voting at the ZBA. The ZBA votes, the five members of the ZBA are the ones who vote, so. The ZBA is not a, again, a public trial, so.
That's irrelevant. This is put out for public, for the public to see.
Okay. Connor has a response.
I actually, I actually agree with you. I mean, we're really proud of the documents on that planning and land use applications by MAP and LOT. And I truly, tonight's the first time that I am hearing that all the documents aren't there. What's interesting, what I think is especially interesting is I know that the zoning board members had them. As you know, I sat through the hearings. And the acting chair at the rehearing read the letters of support. Some people reiterated their letters of support in public. I don't think she read those. And so it's especially interesting to me that the zoning board members had them. And like Mr. Mantrick mentioned, obviously, that's the most important because they're the ones making the decision. And they decided favorably for your business, for your application. But I honestly don't know the answer to that. And I agree with you that that it should be an accurate reflection of the the documents that are in there. So have to check the dates and and figure out what happened for sure, because I think it's it's important. Like I said, we take pride in making the information about applications available like that.
Well, you swung and missed.
Yeah.
And and I would argue that getting the information to the public is equally as important as getting it to the ZBA. Because transparency is important and this looks terrible. And there's another issue here. Did you see the other big flag? Chief Joyce zero parking complaint report. Okay, that was a ninety one A I did. We had a petition forth from the top that we had a bunch of people sign, good people. And any anyway. I I forget how many pages it is, like fifteen pages. I just happened to be scrolling down. And at the very end of that petition was Chief George George Joyce's ninety one A report about how there had been zero parking complaints from two thousand fifteen to whatever was the current date. How did that end up getting buried under our petition? You can click on it now. You can scroll to the end. That is sitting there at the bottom of that document.
Did you submit it with the petition? Was part of the petition?
Absolutely not. And by the way, the fire chief gets his own link. The code enforcement gets his own link. So again, another document that would have shown the public something positive, something positive.
If I may, please. So the I believe that this is something that you or your attorney submitted to the zoning board. And the reason I say that is because what the land use office is supposed to do and did in this case is stamp all of the documents that are submitted with the case with a received and a date. And they're all submitted together or they're all stamped together. And so I I don't know.
Yes, but my attorney also submitted all these letters of support. And they're all stamped together and they didn't show up either.
And honestly, like I said, I I agree that that's a problem and that that shouldn't be how it is. And I don't know why, but that is something I'll look into and make sure that there aren't other issues like that. But I guess the, if it was something the the town submitted. The police chief didn't submit that to the zoning board. The, I guess what happened is the police chief responded to your right to know request. And that was submitted with the documents that you or your attorney submitted. And so I don't think, I mean, I think it was uploaded together.
So at the end of an attorney letter, there's a whole bunch of stuff, kind of like exhibits. It was the same way with Chet and Linda Cole's letter, which somehow did end up as an individual support letter. So someone should have seen that, pulled it out and made it a separate document. But I wonder if they chose to leave it buried there. Here's the thing, guys. We can go over this and say, hey, oops, there's an accident here. Oops, somebody did an ouchie over here. A little mistake here, but we're connecting a lot of dots. We're connecting a lot of dots and and I'll tell you. I'm getting a lot of very evasive answers from you, Dan, Connor. You guys don't want to answer my questions and being very defensive. If you really read this document and cared, you would be asking me questions. This is unbelievable what happened. Okay, let's keep going. We got pictures that shouldn't be in the thing. We've got.
What thing?
The Google Earth photos and other things.
In what thing?
We already covered it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. If we can turn to page twenty eight and twenty nine. Oh, please. So early on in this. Peter Royce, our town treasurer, as he likes everyone to know, walked door to door to my neighbors. And if you didn't know, introduced himself with his official title, walked around to complete strangers and handed out internal internal sensitive Town of Barrington emails. And not only did he do that, but he removed from those emails the part that says. So he hands out these emails to my neighbors and and like I said, many of whom are complete strangers. And he removes the section that says Town of Barrington confidentiality and disclosure notice. And it specifically says the act of disseminating this message, which is strictly prohibited. He cuts that off. Okay? And he hands out a letter that's got most of the department heads CC'd in it, okay? And he proceeds to tell my neighbors why my business is destroying the neighborhood. Okay? And I have neighbors that are happy to testify in court if necessary. Okay, he went around and did this and I complained to Connor. I complained to Connor and said, this cannot be happening. This man was the initial complainant. Well, the attorney writes on page twenty eight nine. Mr. Royce is the town's appointed treasurer. Of course, he does not lose his rights as a citizen. By assuming such a such a position, he may contact code enforcement with concerns just as any other citizen may. And code enforcement treats his complaints no differently than any other citizen. No differently than anyone.
We're sitting here. We're not back there.
Maybe I was stretching.
Maybe you were, but I'm just making that statement to bother them.
I have a terrible back and I do this a lot. So the town attorney said this and the town attorney said he was spoken to for his use of email. Counsel, I believe, was the exact word. So after that point, I I'm just going to go over a few things that Mr. Royce did. Connor emailed Mr. Royce and asked him if he would encourage my neighbors to write letters of complaints from Connor's official email to Peter Royce's official email. You know what encourage is defined by the Merian Webster's dictionary is? Persuade. That email is in the packet. I want to know why Connor, when Peter Royce is supposed to be treated as just any other citizen. Why is our town administrator asking our treasurer, an accountant, to persuade my neighbors to write letters against my business? When you yourself just said the letters are virtually irrelevant? So so why is Connor doing this?
Mr. Chair, please. I I hesitate to to go through every item, but I I take issue with you calling my character into question.
Oh, I am.
Think I I understand that. And I truly believe you have every right to be upset and and I hope the the items that we can agree on of concern, you know, we can, good can come from that and we can make changes to make sure.
Get to the point, please.
Excuse me, he has the same rights as you.
Please don't interrupt.
My rights were trampled on in the last year and a half.
But in this particular venue, we try not to interrupt each other. We don't interrupt you. Please don't.
Why did you ask Peter Royce to persuade my neighbors to get letters of complaints?
Yeah, and I think looking at that response email on its own, the the language that I used certainly wasn't certainly would seem inappropriate. But I think in the context of the two emails that that aren't in your report, where one of your neighbors wrote to Peter on his private email and said, I have a concern about this business. What should I do about it? And where Peter forwarded.
That's in here.
To me and said, what, what should I tell him?
That email is in my report.
Oh, I'm sorry. The only one that I saw is the my response email to Peter Royce. And so my, the neighbor was specifically talking about a complaint. He wanted to make a complaint and was asking Peter how to do it. Peter forwarded that to me and I responded that if anybody has concerns, encourage them to send them to the town.
And that's not what happened because John Huckins then immediately responded directly.
He was on.
Gary Embry.
He was on email also.
So why is Peter Royce not being treated as just a regular citizen?
Yeah, I just.
How about this? The letter that you sent out to everybody, the form letter, you actually sent it to Peter Royce for review. Why is he getting that letter for review?
Mr. Russell, I said, I sent it.
The town treasurer.
Time, I sent it to Peter with for your information.
Based on this information, he should be fully detached.
We asked you once, please allow him to answer, then have your statement afterwards.
The the treasurer is appointed by the select board and I think, you know, the it's it's not my place or position to defend or object to the actions of another official, but I, the point I want to make here is I didn't encourage, I didn't solicit or encourage complaints about your business. I was responding to a specific request from from an individual.
Let me read that email and we'll see if it's encouraged.
Sir, please.
The beginning, it's all public information. And and that's why it was included in a right to know request. So the first sentence of that disclosure is that the email and emails to officials may be subject to public disclosure. And so it was never confidential information. It was public information from from the moment the email was sent. That's how the right to know law works.
Here it is. Peter, I would encourage anyone who has concerns to send a letter to the town. Whether we are working on it or not, it would be good to have complaints on file. Best, Connor McGyver. How how could I not interpret that?
But you are two emails before.
But this is you, the town attorney has already stated that he needs to be treated as any other citizen. You should not be having any communication with him about this case. So would a normal citizen be able to reach out to you and just, just ask you all these questions?
Absolutely.
Aaron Paul, not according to the town attorney.
No, that that's not true. I met with, I actually met with quite a few residents, some in support and some opposition throughout the process. And I did my best to answer all of their questions and provide them information.
Which ones in support did you meet with?
I object to that.
May I?
No, you may not. You may not explain who the people were.
In the audience tonight. But I, the, my goal is, my goal is to provide the best information I can and be as open and transparent as possible. And so that's why anytime somebody contacts me, asks questions, like I said, I do my best and sometimes I have to draw a line where information can't be shared, but in a situation like this, all of the information is public. And sometimes I have to draw a line where information can't be shared, but, um, in a situation like this, all of the information is public information. It's none of it is, is privileged or secret information. And if some people ask for the information more often than others, then they, they'll get responses more often than others.
But only my dissenting neighbors were receiving these play-by-play extremely often emails from Peter Royce. I would get out of a meeting with John Huckins and I would probably be barely at my truck. And Peter Royce would already be emailing the, the con, what I thought was a, was a private conversation I had with John Huckins to, to Gary Embry, who would then in turn email the little association in my neighborhood. My other neighbors that supported me, none of them received this information. None of them received this FaceTime. Peter Royce didn't talk to any of them. That, that creates a, a power imbalance. How is that appropriate? Peter Roy should fully detach himself from this if he is going to truly want to be the, the complainant. Dan, please tell me why this is correct.
Well, I don't know. The, the previous, you haven't indicated that you've seen the two previous emails that were sent to him, sent to Connor.
I've read all the emails.
And they were requesting information on how to respond if they had a complaint.
He should say, Peter, you need to stay uninvolved. Tell your neighbor to, to go to John Huckins. That would be what a police department would do. That is what a professional agency would do.
John Huckins was added to the email. I mean, and that's the course of action that was taken. The code enforcement officer.
Why did you have the town attorney write what they wrote? Why did you have them write that?
That because your attorney sent a request, our attorney answered the request and.
With a feel-good thing to tell me that he is going to be treated just like any private citizen. And we know he wasn't. He got, he got, tell me a single citizen that got a copy of that form letter before it went out. And also was Peter Royce mailed that letter?
I replied to everybody in the finish that they emailed. They contacted me.
That's not what I'm asking you. Did you send out?
It's not a trial.
Did you send out? This is my chance to ask questions, George.
It's not the kind of questions you ask normally. And you know that, but go ahead.
Did anybody else who filed a letter of complaint or a letter of support, did you send them out that sort of pre-letter for review prior to them getting the form letter?
I, I continue to take issues not for review. It literally said in the email, for your information, not for your review. And it was.
Why would you send it to?
I'll tell you why. The, there were residents who were going to him, um, with, with how to contact the town. And, you know, I, I think it's essential that any official separate themselves from their private citizen or I'm a citizen in this town. And, and if I had something as a citizen, it was a concern for me, it would be essential that it would be completely separated. And I don't think that that happened in every case here, and that's not how things should happen because whether there was wrongdoing or not, the appearance wrongdoing, uh, can do a little bit more damage, but the first with, it was important to me to, to make him understand that everybody was receiving that information. So he didn't feel like it was his duty or it was his responsibility to share that with other people. That, hey, everybody that's contacted the town, they're all getting this information.
What about him violating the email policy and handing out that email, cutting off the confidentiality policy?
I, I just said, it says, according to what you cited, it says that it's public information. And, and.
Okay. Did he have authorization to hand out that email?
It was, it's his, it was his email.
To you, the, the chief of police, the, the fire chief, John Huckins. So you're saying any town employee, if you write an email to a whole bunch of other people, they have permission to disseminate it, which is exactly what that line under the confidentiality and disclosure notice, it says they cannot do.
Mr. Russell, I'm not saying that RSA ninety-one A says that.
No, no, no. This is your policy.
But our policy doesn't trump the ninety-one A. The, the confidentiality notice at the bottom is simply to let people know.
And I mean, this is. So you're okay with your employees taking internal emails and just passing them out to strangers?
Mr. Russell, we've talked about this.
I need a straight answer.
We tried not to interrupt you and you.
Are you saying that it is town?
You're interrupting me too. Please don't interrupt people. You can talk. Don't interrupt, please. That's.
If I got straight answers, I wouldn't have to, but you guys are dodging everything I'm asking you. And these are very, very simple questions. He just said it's okay for a town employee to hand out internal emails without authorization. That is a direct, direct contrindication of the policy that is at the bottom of every single internal town email. So did you just make a new policy for the town?
Mr. Russell, it's the state statute, state statute.
No, no.
The pure fact that you have the email means that it's subject.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about this section where it says specifically that, that you cannot hand it out. Its attachments, dissemination, copying or storage, um, is strictly prohibited. I'm not, please stop talking about ninety-one A. I'm saying if, if one of your employees grabs an internal email that they are, just happen to be tagged in, you're fine that they can post it on Facebook?
We'll have to agree to disagree. It's public information.
So they can do that. They can do that. They can print it and then post it on Facebook. An employee of the Town of Barrington can do that.
Certain information, that's correct.
Yes. Without authorization from any manager.
I believe that be the case, but there are certain things that are not the published, uh, such as minutes of our closed sessions, for example.
Okay. So I, so I'm just going to ask you one more time. An employee of the Town of Barrington has an email addressed to a whole bunch of other people and they happen to be CC'd on it. You're saying they do not need any approval from anyone in their chain of command, however you want to call it, manager. They can snap that and they can throw it up on their, on their social media without any repercussions with the town. Is that correct? I cannot believe you would even pause to answer that question. I didn't, I wasn't talking to you.
I know you weren't.
Ask any police agency, ask any professional agency, the answer would be absolutely not. Absolutely not. In fact, that has ended the careers of a number of people. I, I, I cannot believe you, you are going to, you're, you're going to stand on, uh, you're going to fall on this sword. What, what a simple question I'm asking you. So they can do it where, so for all the employees.
It depends.
That's not according to the warning at the bottom of the email. It's very specific that it is prohibited.
Mr. Russell, the, the entire disclaimer starts with it may be subject to disclosure.
It may be.
Moves on to say it may be confidential and can't be disseminated. And, and what Mr. Mantrek is saying is that it does depend. If it's.
Okay, but.
Information, it can't. In, in the case that you're talking about, that's public information, whether the party's involved like it or not, it's public information.
Stretching. I got blown up in Afghanistan, right? Twice. So I, I, I'm going to, we're going to ask one last time. Your employees, starting today, without any authorization, can put any emails publicly on Facebook or other social media. That is correct?
Mr. Chairman, point of. I want, I want to speak. I, I feel that this question has been answered six ways to Sunday. I would appreciate it if you would ask Mr. Russell, move on with his next question, please. It's just my statement to you, sir.
Thank you.
And it is not criticism of any other.
All right, let's move on. Let's move on.
Thank you.
This is, uh, not what I expected. Honestly, I have some other questions. I'm not even going to bother asking them because you kind of predict how you all are going to. Not all, but some of you. Um, all right. Well, here's kind of a big one. And we'll kind of end on this, I think. Does any guys want me out of here?
I don't know. You can stay. You can stay if you have more questions, sir.
Oh. All right. So back when Andy Knapp was the chairman, we received an email from him and then shortly thereafter from the town attorney stating that the remedy for us, and this is all in the, in the packet, was for us to get on the Sept- September fifteenth ZBA meeting. Okay. Um, to attempt to get what we were told at the time was a variance. Uh, we were never told that we could just be found in compliance. We didn't know that was an option. That's ultimately how we won, as you know. We applied for and were accepted for that September fifteenth meeting. The second day, we received an email from, uh, the town attorney, uh, Laura Specter Morgan, saying that they've received it. So they were aware that we had gotten into that September fifteenth meeting. And there's an email just prior where she had again stated that that was our, that was our remedy. Okay? Four days later, the Town of Barrington dropped a lawsuit on us. This was completely unexpected. The attorney that, uh, that I still use, I didn't bring him tonight because honestly I'm trying to save some money. Who represents towns, so he does it both sides, said, this was incredibly unusual because this was exact, almost exactly thirty days prior to that ZBA hearing. He said, the cart was truly brought before the horse. Why would you sue the business when they're going to the ZBA meeting in thirty days? Okay? And there was two really odd things that were added to the lawsuit. And I'm going to ask if these were special requests by the Board of Selectmen or if this was just the, uh, town attorney running amok. One was, our date was November fifteenth, was to request a judge to make a emergency order that we would immediately have, if the judge made the order, we would have to immediately cease all operations at ninety-nine, Tolan Road. The key word is emergency. We would have, we, it was an emergency order to cease all operations. And we were already going before the ZBA board. Okay? I can tell you this with certainty because we did not have a second location at the time. If that had happened, that would have destroyed the business and it would have unemployed eight extremely fine human beings. Quite a few of them are disabled veterans like myself. I do, he said, my attorney said, to see that added in there is highly unusual. He said, he had seen that added into where you might have, uh, you know, a garage where they're spilling toxic waste and, and they just, they got to shut the place down immediately or something. There's an emergency situation. Okay. Um, I failed to see the emergency there. The second thing that was added on there, and this was just the icing on the cake, was that, that they were also requesting that the judges attach forty thousand dollars of my wife and my money, forty K. This is not money. I, we didn't have this money laying around. You know, I didn't have a magic chest in the backyard to bury, uh, uh, you know, to, to, to get out of the ground, to be placed in, in an abatement count. And there was a funny line on that. It was so offensive. It actually said something to the effect of because the town is so certain they will prevail in this lawsuit. So that money would have sat in account at the attorney's for who knows how long. And by the way, if November fifteenth had come, those judges' orders would have been ordered then. And per the docket, we had thirty minutes, thirty minutes for both the town attorney and thirty total. So fifteen minutes for my attorney, I guess, and fifteen minutes for the town attorney to argue to a judge why we shouldn't get that emergency order or should if you're the town attorney. And also why, why do you need forty thousand dollars of our money? We're taxpayers. We have great credit. We're building a business. Why is that even a thing? With COVID, we estimated we might not see a trial date for six to twelve months. Six to twelve months. So I would like to know who requested those two be added? And why, why specifically did we have to have an emergency order? Why could we not have our date in court? What was, what was the emergency?
On the third of August, uh, at our, at our meeting, there was no application for the ZBA at that point. And this is well beyond the six months that you previously agreed, uh, to either come in compliance. Had not, based on, on the judgment that we'd made earlier. This was submitted to the court. I don't know how long it took the attorney to put that in, but, but the attorney did put that in. I believe you applied on the ninth of August, the ZBA. And, uh, as soon as that date was accepted, the town asked the judge to stay any, any further activity pending the ZBA meeting.
Why couldn't the town have simply waited since they knew that we were going to see the board on that date? Why couldn't they have waited? It would have saved the town money and it would have saved my business money.
Cause at the meeting on the third of August, you'd not made application to the ZBA. We didn't know if you were going to make.
That's not true. We told you we were. We were.
You told us that, or we'd suggested that, I think back in April, and this was August. Or I, I take that back to the end of July. This was in August. And there was still no application to the ZBA. Um, and so they made that application. And as soon as, as soon as they, as soon as you did apply to the ZBA, the, we went to the court and asked them to hold, to suspend, oh, the.
Yes. That did happen, but there's still a lawsuit. And, and that caused me, you know, number one, we couldn't get a construction loan. And this is when the cost of materials were significantly lower than they are today. That building, that twelve thousand square foot building that we are going to build, despite what apparently a lot of people in town and Peter Royce and other people are saying, it's a big ruse. You know, I've sold all of my retirement, a quarter million dollars to invest in this building. It, we have our building permit. Okay? If you haven't seen the plans, you should look at them. They are, you know, there's been test wells and everything and all the surveying.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please. This does not go with the questions and, 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 you know, it's.
I'm, we're, we're pleased that you're doing that. We are happy that you're doing that. I don't, I don't think.
The lawsuit cost my business potentially in the six digits, if not much greater. And I'm not just talking about that. I'm talking about literal pain and suffering. This is one of the most stressful things I have ever gone through, worse than Afghanistan. Worse than Afghanistan. And I thought that was pretty bad. And not just for me, for my guys. Okay? This was completely avoidable. You could have just waited. You could have waited one more month. We would have won that. Well, we, it was actually continued. And then we would have won it in October, then it got appealed and we would have won it in February. And there would have been no need for a lawsuit. Connor told me the lawsuit cost six thousand dollars. I don't remember the, the specific numbers. I don't know about that. Six thousand dollars. But you know what? I don't care if the lawsuit cost the town five hundred dollars. It was completely wasted money and the money it cost my business. We are trying to build a beautiful building, a tax base in Barrington. And it cost us dearly. And again, I asked a question. And again, I asked a question. Who requested those two things be added to the lawsuit?
I think we request all the zoning, or rather, the select boards, is that we should file a petition to the court to compel you to amend the compliance with the zoning ordinance.
But you reviewed the lawsuit, right?
The chair did. They authorized the chair to review it before it was issued.
Okay, so Andy Knapp would have reviewed it, correct? He was the chair at the time.
And I don't think he made a special request. I don't think he had any amendments that he suggested.
My point is if they were there, he would have seen them. And they're really completely unnecessary. You don't need my 40 grand because I don't have it. Okay? And you certainly don't have any emergency in shutting down my business unless you want to argue the emergency. Is Peter Royce the emergency?
No, that's not the emergency. I don't know what the wording was.
Well, it's an emergency order to shut down the business. Emergency is in the word.
Sure it is. I don't know how that got in there. The attorney put that in there. I don't know why.
All right, you guys may want to get a new lawyer and maybe get some money back. I'll be honest, because the sloppiness in all this is amazing. All right. This is not what I expected. I really expected you guys to take this a lot more seriously. I'm very surprised. And when I say you guys, I don't necessarily mean all of you. I want to make that clear. I have a lot of respect for you, Dan. You serve your country. I do believe you're trying to protect your own, and I think you might be making a mistake. But that is what it is. I also want to state something. I'm gonna formally oppose Gary Embry's appointment to the ZBA board. I read his application. Part of his application stated that effectively because the voters voted to vote down the three ones that we campaigned against, he felt that the board mosquitoes needed to get out better, proper information. Well, the voters voted, they spoke. Gary Embry is fully entwisted in this. I like Gary Embry. I think he's a good guy. He used to call me all the time when he was in Florida to plow his driveway for free. You know, we used to be friends. I still consider him a friend, and I'd still go over and plow his driveway if he called me today. If this thing gets any closer to me, I'm gonna, oh, I think I got it. I got it. Anyway, sorry about the mic, but I don't like getting bit by mosquitoes. I am voicing my objection to Gary Embry simply upon his behavior that I have noted in here, I do not believe makes him a person fit to be on one of the most important boards in town. That is my opinion. And I'm not saying he's a bad guy. I actually think he's an exceptional person. He's also served this country very honorably. At a minimum, I believe you're voting for him tonight. This investigation should be 100% done and complete before, in my opinion, you consider voting for him. I believe he was very aware of all the special treatment he was getting. And frankly, I worry that he got this appointment as kind of a tit for tat. I have no evidence of that. I have no evidence of that. But with everything else going on, just just my old cop hunch. So I'm very disappointed. And I think I'm not the only one. I'd like to see what you all do the next couple of days, but it's difficult because you told me yourself, if you take any disciplinary action, we won't know. Correct?
That's generally true.
Well, the only thing we would know if someone is released from their position, right?
That's for sure.
Right, but if someone was suspended, the town would not, like, say you suspend, you know, Jim Sikosia for a week, that wouldn't be public college, right?
It's not within our power.
Well, I was trying to be a little humorous.
I know you were.
So it puts us in a difficult situation because I'm not the only one here that thinks that some egregious things took place. And the thing is, like I said earlier, just in closing, if there was just a couple dots here, a couple little mistakes, a few things missing, but there are so many issues, so many slant pieces of sloppiness. And I didn't even begin to cover everything in my report because we would be here all night and that wouldn't be appropriate. So I just worry that this is gonna get washed over, and I hope that's not the case. I will be keeping a close eye on this and so will others. And I pray, literally, I pray that you all will do the right thing. And I do believe there's some good people in front of me here. I just hope you guys, you know, just do the right thing, I guess. That's about it. You guys have any last questions to me? I'm guessing the answer is no.
Russell, thank you very much for your appearance. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry for the couple of interruptions. Didn't mean it out of disrespect. I can be kind of an intense guy. So.
But again, thank you very much for coming forward. Connor has a question.
I just wanted to say, not only to you, but to anybody else that's interested or involved. Please send me any questions that you have. I'm happy to do my best to answer them or provide information, you know, to help put any concerns to rest or make additional concerns that I might not be aware of, make me aware of them. So I'm happy to respond to anybody that contacts the town.
I take it George Joy didn't come back? What was that? That's all right. We'll take care of that another day.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Hey, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Appreciate your time. And I did get that.
Public hearing, issuance of building permits on Eagle Drive, private road for Ed Friedman, map 110, lot 6.
Mr. Chair, would you like a brief introduction? Mr. Friedman's participating electronically.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see you up there. Please.
Would you like an introduction?
Please, please, Mr. Friedman. Would it be all right if Connor introduced you to the group, please?
Please do.
Please do.
Yeah, I was just gonna introduce the topic. So there's two public hearings tonight for issuance of building permits on private roads. Both of them are asking for a waiver. The department head's reviewed it. It went to the planning board. Those comments in here, I'm sure that you've read them. The gist of the comments from the planning board are, if you're going to ask for a waiver, we'd like to see some improvements be proposed to the road because the goal of the policy is to make incremental improvements. And so that was how the planning board had kind of resolved it. And I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Friedman have additional comments that's not in your packet about any plans or anything they're proposing to do to the road, or if it's simply the way that you previously submitted.
Mr. Friedman, please, or Mrs. Friedman, whichever one wants to go first.
Thank you. Ed Friedman, I have submitted a waiver and then review with the planning board in consultation. They have asked for a pavement section and some gravel and for us to join a local association. I'm not opposed to either of those things. I don't have the information at this time that they had requested for. People are busy, as you probably are aware of. I've reached out to an excavator and a paving contractor. Haven't got anything back. So I would submit that as soon as I have documentation, I'll submit as part of a permit process.
Well, we're waiting, Mr. Chairman. I would like to turn around and suggest, only suggest that the board consider maybe a continuance until such time that information can be provided. Only suggestions, Jim.
Planning board have some guidelines to go on for the road. If you doesn't have those in front of them, probably you want to wait before you get those too, before you commit to them, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Committing to what the planning board suggests for the road improvements, you probably want to wait on those and not say, "Hey, yeah, I want to do them." And then get them being like, "Oh, boy, that's actually a little bit more than I intend to bite off or can bite off." I agree with Select Board's Bailey.
So I was at the planning board meeting, because I sit on the planning board, and the discussion was a couple of truckloads of gravel. There's a place where it comes off of golf course way onto their gravel road. And it just kind of goes down a little bit to fill that in and then to pave the apron. So we were not looking at very much paving, was my understanding.
Yeah, I think it was a two-foot section and then the width of the road, which was like 16 feet, 14 feet.
Okay, I didn't see that. That's why I asked. Thank you. They didn't ask for any subbase on that when they were before the planning board?
They did not. And we do have a letter here from Vanessa Price that says what I just.
I would hope so.
I want to make sure. Additional gravel and two-foot apron extension.
I know, I know it isn't, but it's just, see, they just didn't include all that information.
I mean, if that's directly from the planning board.
Joyce Day, thank you for bringing that up.
I do.
The road doesn't meet all the standards that I think are, there are a bunch of houses on that road. And to ask them to do the whole road.
I think there are four houses on this road. Is that correct?
Correct, four houses on that road. And I think the issue was, as you come off of Eagle Drive onto Golf Course Lane, they thought there'd maybe be some road, you know, erosion coming from the dirt road to the pavement, just to protect basically the current paved road.
Right, because there is some visible erosion there. I went over to look at it yesterday.
I've tried to plant a flower bed there to slow the traffic down.
That doesn't appear in this memo.
I know, I think it says somewhere in your application that 10% of your project was gonna be 6,000 something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They don't have a terribly expensive project.
64,000 total. Did you accept the motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that petition from Edward Freeman be accepted and be noted that the proposals that were changed by the planning board, be part of the motion, they complete it that way.
Second, Mr. Sikosia.
Capello, aye.
Sikosia, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Matt Trick, aye.
I have a question about process. So when this is completed, they notify the code enforcement officer and he goes and approves the work. What's that process?
Basically, great question. So it's the building inspector's responsibility to make sure all the conditions are met prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy. And so as the policy's written, there's something they will have to do prior to being issued a building permit. And then there are some things they'll need to do prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy. And so that's the responsibility of the building inspector to ensure if there are specific requests or requirements from a department head, the policy also indicates that the department head should be signing off or, you know, giving acknowledgement to the building inspector that they were accomplished, whether the road agent requests a culvert specifically or the fire chief a turnaround sometime.
Thanks for that clarification.
Oh, and Mr. Chair, Tiffany so eloquently pointed out, we need to have a public comment at the public hearing.
So sorry.
And so you can.
I'm sorry for that. Are there any comments from anyone in the audience?
I see John Huckins has his hand up.
Very good. Thank you, John. Go ahead.
The issue of the road association, I want to make sure we're got it clear with you. Are they gonna accept a responsibility that has to be recorded? Or is it gonna be on a documentation of the road association? Because there's a requirement before I issue the permit that that has to have a recording in it as part of the thing along with the thing that indemnification has to be recorded? I just want to get clarification on your decision on that.
It's a great point, John. So on that topic, this was something that was in the old policy but wasn't really happening. And the goal of this is to make sure that there are recorded road maintenance agreements for these private and class 6 roads. A lot of times they exist informally, which sometimes works really well until it doesn't. And so the select board's policy requiring that a recorded instrument exists at the registry indicating road maintenance requirements. In practice, that has sometimes been just an individual property owner that's the applicant recording something at the registry, acknowledging that they're accepting maintenance responsibilities for the road. But I think the bigger picture goal is to make it a recorded instrument of the road association. And so I guess what John's saying is that they've requested a waiver from that portion. I think when the select board set the policy, which some of you weren't here for, I think it was important to the select board that we incrementally start getting recorded road maintenance agreements that we can refer back to for future residents and things. So the question remains, does the board want to waive the requirement for a recorded road maintenance agreement? Or obtain that requirement and leave it up to the applicants, whether that's done in conjunction with the road association or just on their own as an individual?
My opinion, my opinion is that we probably should begin to have the whole road. We should have some sort of registered agreement. I think that protects everyone, especially in the case of Eagle Drive where there are several houses along the road. I think an individual agreement puts each individual at some risk where it really belongs to the, or it should be the responsibility of the whole association. So I would suggest that that be part of the waiver, that the road association has a registered, and that's my opinion.
And a problem with that, I don't mean to cut you off, is we can't, the reason we have it in a policy for applicants is because we can't make a road association do anything. The select board only has control over the applicant that you have in front of you. And so if they run into trouble with the road association not agreeing to record something, then that get tied up. So if you intend to make it a requirement, my recommendation would be to leave it vague so that if they can accomplish it with the road association, awesome, that's best case scenario. But if they have to accomplish it on their own, the building inspector has a sample, an example of a really simple road maintenance agreement. And they could revert back to doing it on their own. And maybe the applicants have a comment on it as well.
Please, you, Friedman's comment?
I have reached out to the Nippon Lake Association to understand if there is an association, a road association. And to my initial learning, I haven't found anything that says there is a northern part of the pond road association. There is several other areas that have an association. I'm looking for them. Sarah Lane and Flower Drive apparently have some sort of loose association. So I can't answer you about there being a formal group of residents who have formed an association, but I don't think, on Eagle Drive, yeah, I don't think there's anything on Eagle Drive that's been developed. But I'm not averse to it. Personally being responsible to some degree.
Because that area has, as he has stated, has several individuals that take care of only certain areas. One area that I have friends that live in, I only noticed for fact is that when they removed trees and everybody, it was only those people that were in that direct area. So there are, I think, three separate groups and none of them really claim to be the number one group. So it's all whatever the people in the street really do. So I think what you recommended was okay.
Well, if there is an association. Well, if there isn't an association, there is not an association, should be, but there isn't. And, and as Connor points out, I don't think we can force them to have an association, but.
The building inspector has another comment again.
John?
I think to follow the policy then from the, to try to make sure I get the policy right to what you guys are talking about. So they would be responsible in their road association to do from Eagle Drive to 50 foot past their driveway, because that was the intent of 50 foot pass. And I think that's what I didn't, I should have brought a copy of the registration with the application thing with me, your policy, but wasn't it 50 feet past is what it was? So it would just be, it's not the whole road they would have to maintain. It's from the beginning of Eagle Drive to 50 foot past their driveway.
That doesn't sound familiar, John.
No, I think in the policy, well, it was something written in before that was, so you're not going to have to maintain the whole road. I guess is what the comment is that maintain way past your house was not the intent, I guess is what I'm trying to understand. I want to make sure it's clear when I issue this.
It's a good question. So the requirement for road maintenance agreement only for category three applications indicates prior to the actual issuance of a building permit, the applicant is encouraged to join and contribute to the local road association responsible for road maintenance or individually agree to perform the road maintenance necessary to safely access the property from a class five or better road. In either case, the applicant shall provide the select board with a road maintenance agreement for the purpose of guaranteeing that future maintenance of the access road will be performed in a timely manner. This agreement shall be recorded as Stratford County Registered Deeds prior to the issuance of a building permit. The road maintenance agreement requirements detailed above are in addition to the statutory road maintenance requirements provided in RSA 231 colon 81 dash A.
Translate that.
Yeah. So what it's saying, again, the goal is to have recorded instruments that because even if, even if the Freedmans agreed to build the whole road from the class six road to 16 feet wide with two foot shoulders, if it's not properly maintained, then all that work goes out the window. And so these road maintenance agreements is, is the goal to start developing and establish recorded instrument at the registry. And that statute is new. It's two or three years old. And the purpose of that statute is to make it clear to, to neighbors that live on a class six or private road that they have a responsibility to contribute to the maintenance, period. And so in conjunction with that new statute and this policy, having property owners that are looking to build on a class six or private road have something recorded indicating that there is a maintenance that they're, that they're, what's the guaranteeing that future maintenance of the access road will be performed in a timely manner. And over time, we'll start to develop these for all the private road. It's not uncommon, Mark gets most of them, for people that live on private roads and complain about the maintenance condition of their road. And the town has no role. The town actually can't do anything except in extenuating emergency situations. And so once we start to develop these road maintenance agreements and know that they exist, we can let them know. Hey, look, if you live on Flower Drive, look at Stratford County Registry of Deeds, book X, page Y, and you'll see a road maintenance agreement. Go talk to the association, go talk to the neighbor and let them know that you have concerns and this maintenance agreement is, is pertinent to that.
So at the planning board meeting, I think that was discussed, that you would register this or join the association. It sounds like in this case you would register it on your own. What I would need some clarification on is the mention of a 50 foot. I mean, at the planning board, we were talking about the erosion where the two roads come together. If you can clarify that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that's, I know that's not in the policy. I think before, under the old policy, the road agent or the select board would indicate maintaining or, or doing work 50 feet beyond the driveway for the purposes of a turnaround, but that's not part of this. That's not part of the conversation. Certainly if, if a department head were to say that the condition beyond the driveway is poor and they want it upgraded. Sometimes the last person to build on a road, especially a class six road that, that turn into being not maintained publicly or privately. Sometimes the fire chief would say, we want you to upgrade the road a little bit farther than your driveway, 50 feet, so that we have a place to turn around. So the last thing, the road doesn't lead into your driveway.
Which is not the case.
Yeah. And I don't think that applies here.
Thank you.
So there's public comment and maybe there would need to be an updated motion to include the requirements that, that the waiver for the road improvements is granted with the conditions provided, but the rest of the policy remains.
Close public comment. All right. Okay. Do we know further public comment? We'll close public comment. Okay.
I, I will also like to amend my motion without objection. I'd like to motion that the part of the road agent, I mean, the road maintenance statement as stated by Connor, be included on the tail end of my motion.
Without objection. Okay. All those in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All five. Okay.
You'll take care of that, Tiffany. Thank you. I sure appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask Connor's, Connor's comment is to send this to the deed registry? Registry? Is that his comment?
Okay. So John will be able to help you. Yeah. If, if you don't make out with the road association, John has an example, a sample of, of what you could record and, and he should be able to walk you through the process.
All right. Thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
Any other? Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Am I pronouncing this right? Is it Mosher or Masher?
Mosher.
Mosher, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Byron. My name is Mantrick. No one can pronounce it. My name is Mantrick. No one can pronounce that either. So I apologize.
I've, I've been called a lot of things, barnyard and all sorts of different things. So I sympathize with you.
This relates to the building permit on five seven McDaniel Shore Drive. Lot, I don't have it all down. Yeah. Map 124 lot 10. I think we've, questions from the public. Any questions?
I have just a question I have is after reading through everything else and I noticed that according to our records of $23,500, that's the 10% of the pricing doing it. My gosh, that's, that's, that is a lot of money. How much, how many feet of the road, sir, are they asking you to do on that?
My lot is a hundred foot of, of road frontage.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think, sir, I think they wanted to either, be to either bring the road to, this is my understanding, bring the whole road up to your standard 16 foot, the two foot buffers and everything like that gravel or contribute the, the 10%, $23,500 to road maintenance.
Yes, I don't think.
And then while they were, while, while they were there, they asked for an alternative. Did you ever come up with an alternative for that 10%?
I think that's what you're going to present to us tonight.
That's what I, yeah, I'm here to, so let's make a deal.
Thank you, sir. That was not a word. I didn't see it in my notes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the, the, this up for public comment, please.
Which I, I'd like to sort of go through really quickly, this project. I'm asking for a waiver on one of the requirements in, in the policy and a, some consideration on the second, a second one of the February 2022 policy on building on, on classics roads. Some, a quick project overview. Back in 1995, I bought this property. It's a small lot, 100 by 80 foot lot with a 30 by 30 foot and story building on it. It served as my residence for quite a while. I had a couple of tenants in there. I retired recently in 2015. I came back to the state here in 2016 with, and in 2021, I requested and it was granted a demolition permit for, to take down the, the building that was there and to remove it down to the foundation with the provision that I was going to replace that building with a, another building and using the same footprint. So last year, the, I got the permit, the house came down, I got it, we got it capped and all ready for the building, which we had hoped where it's going to be put up last fall. Well, unfortunately with COVID and, and everything, those plans fell through and we got bumped to, to this year. And right now I'm on the schedule for the end of this month to get the house up and built. And so I, I want to stress that I'm, I'm using the same foundation. It, it does have a little bit bigger footprint and that's only because the overhangs I'm using on the new building were slightly larger than the old building. And it, and it came a foot over into the setback. So we've gotten a variance for that and, and everything. I'm going to use the same well, the same septic system. The only issue is because I'm adding a, I would like to add a second story, I'm increasing the volume of the building. And that kicks me into category three, which has some pretty stringent requirements. And those are the ones I'd like to talk about. There's no new driveways that are going to be put in. I'm not asking for anything like that. The parking will remain the same. I park along the road. That's the only place I have to park. There will be no impact on the road and as far as the building goes. And the town road agent did suggest that, that you put a revisal in there that if there is any unintended damage to the road, that it will be fixed and, and, and I will take care of that. And I certainly have no problem with that at all. And we certainly wanted to, I, I live there and I don't want to hear my neighbors complaining and knocking on the door saying, what, what'd you do? You messed up the road. So I am requesting a, a waiver on the part G where, where I'm required to set up a maintenance agreement where I'm required to give to the select wood of maintenance agreement recorded in the registered deeds. Well, we've had for over thirty years, a very informal but set up road association. It consists of all the people that, that own property, except for the two scofflaws that don't seem to want to pay, but everybody else does. And, and the funds are, are reused every year for, for not just maintenance, but also for improving the road surface. We, the dues are probably 200 to 250 dollars a year. And I've been a member since I bought the house back in 95 and I've been a contributing member, money even when I wasn't living at the, at the location. And I also have put a lot of sweat equity into this. It doesn't, you know, it requires people to do, and I'll go into some of that work that we're doing. The association is, is informal, as I said, but it meets once a year and we plan the road maintenance and improvements for the following year. And we set up, we set up a yearly road grading by Bell and Flynn. Before that happened, the association has two details. And in the spring, we go out and clean out all the gutters and the culverts and everything before the grader comes in. And, and so we don't get all that, the leaves and everything that are building up on the side road and framed back into the, into the road surface when, when Bell and Flynn comes in to grade. And we've also been all, in, in the last years, asking them and they've been bringing in fill to, to improve the quality of the road. And there are additional road repairs that members of the association, association do periodically as needed. And in other words, if a tree comes down or if a gutter gets filled up or a culvert's not running, you know, people will stop, you know, if somebody will go out and clean things, clean things up, cut down the tree. We've got several, a lot of retired gentlemen with tractors and chainsaws and, and we do a pretty darn good job as, as it is right now, I think, both maintaining and improving the road. That fill that puts in, we put in every year, we put in it, it's areas where spring has indicated that we, we need to beef up the road there. We have, somebody was been working lately on a, on a, on the storm water drainage around a three-way intersection. And he's done a really good job of improving that cold flow there. Even myself, I, I live on, my house is, my lot is on a slope, downward slope. And there's water running down into a, to a swell in the bottom. And there's some, some problems there because this poor guy down there gets all the water from both directions. So on my property, at least I've put on, on both ends, the upstream end, I've put some gravel down so that I could take the water that's coming down the road at, at the beginning of my property and, and get it off the road and into, to settle into my property rather than going all the way down. I do the same, I've done the same thing on the low end of my property. So I'm trying to take the water that comes and, and, and get it off the road. We've been, we've made lately several, we have a long, the road is a, is a long straightaway that comes down and, and it slopes all the way down. So we have a lot of maybe quarter of a mile, half a mile of channels on both sides of the, we've been trying to get the water out of them and into the woods as well. And we've made a couple of cuts, one on both sides to do that, to relieve the, the pressures. So not all the water, all the water that's running down the road doesn't end up right down at the bottom there at the low spot. And this has been pretty darn effective. Winter, we have another association, another sort of armed association, I guess you'd say. And we contribute to the people of the, the year round people and contribute money for the snow plowing and the sanding. The person who does that is Greg Abbott Elliott, and he lives right at the beginning of the road. He has his sander right there. He has a big supply of sand. So he's been doing a really good job of keeping the, the road safe. And we realize that's really important. And I think everybody does, even the people who don't live there year round. They kick into the, to the winter fund so that we can keep the road open and passable because they know that fire and EMTs and things like that need to get down there. So we're, we're really, we're, we're on it. We're really doing a good job. And I don't see any utility in, you know, requiring me to, to sort of duplicate a process that we already have running and, and doing an effective job, I think, of not only just maintaining the road, but also improving it. Last year, for instance, there were 155 cubic yards of gravel. Some of you may know how many truckloads that is. I don't, but I think it's a fair amount of gravel. This year, there's already been 30 yards more put in. So we're really working to not only maintain the road, but improve it as well. And we've been doing this for 30 years. I've been a member for almost 27 years now since I bought the property. It's a, it's, the association is a democratic park. We sit around, we talk, everybody has their input and then we decide where to spend the funds. There's never been a time when we didn't have enough funds to do work that we needed, we felt needed to get done. And nothing's ever been put off or canceled because of that. We've always had enough money in our fund. And we usually end up with, I think the total input is somewhere around five to $7,000. And we usually end up with a couple of thousand dollars in the bank before the next round of things going on. So I think we're doing a really good job and, uh, let's see what else. Um, yeah. And we did get some feedback from the town road agent about the, the state of the road right now. And he said, I quote, "The road shows usual signs of winter wear. It could use some grading," which is going to happen. It's already scheduled and, and Bell and Flynn are coming in. We will do, we will do our cleanup before they get there and everything. It's all in the works already and a few loads of gravel. And the grading, as I said, is planned already and we put in, we have Bell and Flynn put in gravel wherever they, we feel it's necessary. The ditches, I said, will all be cleaned out. And we've identified on the road agents, he did mention some, some trees near the road that could, could be taken out, leaning or, or dead. And we've already gotten a quote to do that. He suggested joining the local road association. I am a member, have been in good standing all these years. And he did ask for an addendum where I would speculate, no, I, I would stipulate that any damage, any incidental damage that was done by the building process, I would be, be responsible and I would be glad to repair it. As I said, I, I have neighbors out there and I want to keep. to repair it, as I said, I I have neighbors out there, and I want to keep everybody happy. So, um, you know, like I said, the annual budget's about five to seven thousand dollars. Um, there's no, as I said, we haven't delayed anything, and I've never, I haven't heard either of any instances where either E M T or fire or any emergency services were not able to get down there because of the quality of the road. Well, we all know, if you know dirt roads, there is times when they get pretty difficult in the muddy season and stuff, but we're we're really doing a good job, I think. So I don't see the utility in in um, you know, reinventing wheel kind of thing on that. Um, and now, as far as the considerations for my input, as I said, I have been a card-carrying member and and dues-paying member for twenty-five odd years. I contribute, uh, I work on the the date, the details as well, you know, annually, and we're all, a lot of people are involved in it. And um, that twenty-three thousand, I mean, that's the cost of the windows that's in the house that I've been adult. It's a, it's a big, big um financial burden to me to 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 take that, to to have to invest that kind of money when the process is already being, um, we're doing that already. We're maintaining and improving the road. We're doing our best, we really are. And and I think the the few amount of things that the road agent was able to point to um sort of back up that, that my claim that we are doing a good job and as as good as possible. He does say, obviously, that there are some areas on the road where it it's not possible that we don't, it's very very difficult to to uh get a sixteen-foot-wide uh road service where two cars could pass, but um, there is a big loop, and and most of the residents follow a single way around it, so there's typically, there hasn't been any problem with the with the road constriction or anything like that, and it would be very, very expensive to take out trees and boulders and things like that. And we have to be, the 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 folks who actually own the road are 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 members of the association as well, but we have to, we we coordinate with them and make sure that they're okay with us taking, we've taken down trees to make the road a corner a little bit easier to navigate and everything like that. And so they, we work alongside the the owners of the road because we only have a right-of uh passage or right-of-way, I guess it is. There is actually, I looked at my deed the other day, there is a clause in there that requires me to, it gives me the right-of-way passage, but it actually requires me to contribute no more than five dollars a year to a uh to the maintenance of the road. You can tell the deed is is pretty old, but we are, but we're we're doing a lot more than just, you know, paying five dollars a year, I think. Um, let's see, there's no backlog of repairs. Uh, it doesn't involve, this this project doesn't involve any subdivision um of land of any type. It's it certainly is not going to cost the 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 cost of any additional expenditures for the town. Um, and it it will actually improve, I think, the neighborhood and increase property values and um and and property taxes as well. Um, if you decide that, if you feel that it is um, it's necessary that I make additional monetary contributions above and beyond what I've already been doing and everything, I would ask that that additional money would be given to the road association so that they could democratically decide what to use the that money for. Uh, it's a simple project, really, with zero impact on the road and won't require any any funding, it's from uh public funding. And I'm just, just trying to get building permit so a retired guy can can get a decent house to live in and retire.
Are there any other public comments? Road agent, do you have any other comments? Very good, thank you. Yes.
So I'm sympathetic that you started this project before the road, the class six road changes, but the planning board was pretty specific that they wanted you to come up with something to improve the road beyond what it is. I heard you just sort of say maybe a monetary contribution or take down some, but I think you would think about what you would contribute to bettering the road.
Well, as as I said, what I would suggest is if we could agree, if if it was uh some additional financial input was was required, I I would leave it to the to the road association to make that decision because that's that's who has done it in the past, and it's difficult for me to, as a single, you know, person, to come up with, and I can't force the association to, you know, spend money to do this, that, or the other thing. It's a consensus, and and that's what I would suggest we would continue to do is reach a consensus and, okay, this money needs to.
But I'm not hearing what you would contribute to moving the road based on the class six regulation. We talk about ten percent of the improved value, um, and the planning board was willing to work with you around that, but I'm still not hearing specifically what you are going to do, what you are going to contribute.
Well.
Are you, are you going to take down X number of trees or make a financial contribution to the?
Well, that's what I'm, excuse me, um, that's what I'm here to, what what?
I I was thinking a specific plan.
Well, as I said, the road agent really didn't identify a lot of stuff that needed to be done. He he's mentioned it needed to be graded. Well, the grading is already going, uh, taking place. He mentioned that there were gutters that that needed to be cleaned out. Uh, I actually went by the the day after he came by and cleaned out the one that he was talking about. That stuff happens, well, that's that's fully maintenance, that's not improving it. Um, the improvement that we've been doing is is really mostly the gravel and things that we've been adding. We've taken down a few trees to make corners easier. We 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 try and remove vegetation to so that the sightlines around corners are are safer. Um, but um, it it's, we have a quote to take down the trees that he identified, it was about six hundred dollars. Would you like me to pay for that? Is that something more specific that that?
You didn't, so how, that is helpful to hear that you're willing to take down some
Yeah.
And how many trees did you?
Uh, I, there were only about half a dozen, I think, at most. The quote was something around six hundred dollars to to take down those trees. Typically, in the past, we we've been doing it ourselves. That gentleman there is in his eighties, Carl, and and you heard that story, yes, but, you know, I was, and he was out there with a chainsaw cutting things down.
So does anyone else?
So I look at this a little bit differently. Well, we're a board of five, we all have our different views on this, but uh, Mr. Moser, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, he's been involved with, because I live on a private road, James Henry Drive, I'm James Henry, uh, been there for close to thirty years. So, you know, I know about pitching in and taking trees and doing that and doing this, and I believe what he was saying was, they have an association, they already have a system in place to take care of their roads. They already have, uh, you know, most years an abundance of money, so if there was something substantial that they needed to take care of, they could. So, you know, and also with me, you had a demolition per uh permit in twenty-one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, granted, that's not a building permit, but, you know, we're going to have these, you know, this is, this is a special case, right? Going from one year where the rules changed to where they were. I see where he already started the project on twenty-one. Um, you know, and as an active member in the road association, and it sounds like there's other road association folks here, and, you know, he's building on the existing foundation, I don't see, I don't see it being a huge issue to to waive this.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. I sit here and I I would ask you your corrections. Right now, ten percent is twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, and uh, Joyce is turned to Joyce, rather, sorry. Yes, I I know how it is, and the planning board also has asked you, what would you be willing to contribute to help this road go along? But now, before you go, let me explain to you, through the years, now, the the original plan back in two thousand two or two thousand three was was at my hand when I was chair. That was way back then, but then it was substance substantial, but it was worthwhile working for. And then as the years have passed, it didn't cover anything that was being done with the extra buildings and the extra traffic on the roads. The children have grown up, and you know, you can't say no to a sixteen-year-old with a car, so it becomes the point of having to rewrite this to help the town and to improve the safety. And we, we, the board, the past board and department heads, and I'm not going to admit Connor, but we all sat down and said, what can we do to ensure the safety of the people? Sometimes the fire chief or the EMS chief had difficulty, or the police might have had some trouble with the car. So we sat down with all of their comments, and we came up with this plan. And now the planning board was asking you, your ten percent contribution is what we know it is, and we, you were just asked, how much of that are you willing to do? The road association is not part of the board of select. So the decision would have to come from the five of us, sir.
To me, it would have to come.
Decision would have to come from the five of us.
Okay.
We would all have to come to it, and we're trying to find something that's going to be amicable for you. That's why the select person was asking you that. So that's where we're at, and it it's easy to say what you want. I mean, I would look for zero too, but I know zero is not going to happen, as far as I'm concerned, not the other board members. So that's where we're at. What would be amicable for you to do?
Are you speaking, are you asking for a monetary amount or a, I'd be happy to to take down the trees that were identified, that had been identified? Um, but we haven't identified any other.
Um, we have identified twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. That's where we're at. That's that's your ten percent share put into the road itself by getting your building permit. That that's the way it is here in town, and I've explained to you the best I can. What would, and you was asked by the planning board and again tonight, and again by myself, what are you willing to do? What's amicable for you? I, you know, I'm, we can't set the policy, but we already have twenty-three thousand five hundred. That's what we've already set. So you've asked for consideration, what are you willing to do with what amounts to? Am I stepping over bounds?
No, that's exactly what.
I think I have a suggestion.
What? I I want to do something.
How much, how much are your year dues for winter and, you know, the the road maintenance?
Um, about four to five hundred dollars for the total outlay every every year.
Okay, because what I think the the board is looking for, and in particular, you know, the two that asked the question, and and here's something that I just spitballed off my head here, um, but, you know, they would be looking for something, hey, guys, how about this? How about I do an extra year's dues, and then I also take care of the the half a dozen uh trees that Mark um had mentioned that that should go, need to go, and with that, the monetary value be anywhere from a thousand to, you know, sixteen hundred bucks?
I, that sounds very reasonable to me, that, and that's what I'm here to to do is to to make a deal, to to see what what um what I can do.
I was giving you an example, but that's what they.
Well, I I I I take your, I take your example, and and I would agree with it.
Well, sir, I would be looking for ten grand. That's that's where I'm at. So sixteen hundred, ten grand, and we got the policies twenty-three thousand five hundred.
From a, excuse me, from a procedural standpoint, what discretion does the board actually have in changing policy that's been pre-established?
Change it.
It's a good question. There's a waiver provision, which is what Mr. Moser has applied under, and so that gives the select board flexibility to to waive the portions that you would. I would, um, at any time a waiver is issued, um, there are specific reasons, extenuating circumstances or whatever else, um, because you, the last thing you want is to have a policy that you're constantly waiving. That's what we ended up with with the last policy, which is why we've made the changes. And I think one point about the, you know, I, the goal, two big picture things real quick, if you'll indulge me. The goal of setting the policy in this way is that it comes to the board as a complete package, that there's a scope, there's a specific, this is opposing to spend the money. Little bit still in the in-between where this process, he really wanted to keep going, so he at least had a chance to talk with the board. Um, and our goal in the future is is to make sure that it comes to the board as a complete package with specifics, with a specific scope of what is being proposed to be done or not done, which should make it more efficient. Second big-picture comment is about the uh input from the road agent. It was noted at the planning board hearing that um the road agent kind of painted with a broad brush stroke about the condition of the road. Um, and I spoke up at that meeting and indicated that's what I heard the select board wanted from him. Not a, he's not the road agent for private roads. He's not supposed to go out there and create a road improvement plan for every private road. He has eighty miles of his own roads to maintain and without having to worry about. But at the same time, his big-picture input is valuable for the board to consider. And so especially where somebody's asking for a waiver, what I read in Mark's comments is there's things that could be done to improve the road above regular maintenance. And from a big picture, it doesn't matter which six specific trees or or which pinchpoints exist or culverts, but from a big picture, if the select board's curious, i- is this road perfect or could it use improvements? It could use improvements. Every road can use improvements, including town roads. Mr. Moser pointed out uh some of the town gravel roads that we have trouble with every year. Every road could use improvements. And so I think the select, the the select board and applicants under this new policy should rely much less on specific directives from the road agent opposed to big picture and putting the responsibility on the applicant to make a specific request. And obviously, we're kind of hashing some of that out now because of the timing of things, uh, but I think it's important to make those two comments for looking ahead and as it relates to this one.
I think probably a specific, a specific request or specific plan would be useful. I think it's useful to have a road association. I would suggest that the road association get together and and make a, what did we call it, the?
Road, road maintenance agreement.
Road, road maintenance agreement, not so much for the people that now exist, but the fact that property may get sold, people move in, people move out. Uh, I think it would be useful to have that as a formal thing for your, for your purposes, not just individually, but for the for the whole group of of people along that road, that that would, I think, come closer to ensuring that you always have maintenance of that road. As people move, people pass on, uh, I mean, new people move into the area that may not have the understanding. There also is some um in-kind services. You don't necessarily have to have a dollar amount. Um, cleaning the, cleaning the ditches should be worth some money.
Hundred percent. It's a.
Exactly. So just having a dollar figure may, I think we can do additional. If you're not going to do any work, yes, we need the bucks, uh, or you need the bucks to to bring this improvement. But if you're doing a lot of the work, that counts and should be part of this plan for what you're, what you're planning to do. That may be in conjunction with, should be in conjunction with the with the road association, I think, just because you're all neighbors you live with. You have, you all have a vested interest in a good road, so.
And as I mentioned, we are doing improvement. We we annually do improvements, we really do. It's, the road is getting better.
There's not, you look like you're going to have to make a comment, is that correct? Yes. It, it's a public hearing, so if you'll.
Might need to come up here.
If you would, please.
Just so we can hear you.
My name's Scott LaPointe, and five thirty-five McLean is still driving. Have a seat.
I am, I don't mind standing.
Well, I have to catch you on the screen, sir.
Shows better, keep a smile, your camera ready here.
I pass for what is the road agent association. Um, give you some background, just last year and what we try to do each year because we don't have a formal improvement program, but we improve, and we do it every year. Last year, Bell and Flynn brought in, on their two days there, they brought in a hundred fifty-five cubic yards of material, a mixture of crushed gravel, and there was some. fifty-five cubic yards of material, a mixture of crushed gravel and there was some crushed asphalt. We also in the spring bring in crushed stone for the muddy areas, brought in thirty yards this year. So we got a hundred eighty-five cubic yards minimum over the last year. To me, that's an improvement and it's an improvement to what your stated goal is. Yes, you want it wide, yes, you want this, but you want the pad, you want the base capable of supporting the weight of a fire engine three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And that we're coming to, and I think we're close to. So we do improve. Now, what can Byard do? Byard comes out and with me, and he's there every spring and fall when we blow and clean the roads. He's there when we clean up culverts. So you asked me to put a quick dollar value on that. If I had to hire somebody to come along and do that with me, thousand bucks, fifteen hundred bucks, cleaning culverts isn't any fun when you're doing it by hand. And we do several, we've got fifteen of them. And we've got one point seven miles of road, so it contributes a lot. I do think there's some equity here in regards to timing. February fourteenth, you passed this policy. I'm sure you had public hearings. I'm sure you discussed that. But still, it catches some people by surprise and Byard already in the process. I hope you take that into consideration. I hope you also take into consideration, we haven't had any complaints from the town that an emergency vehicle has ever failed to be accessed. That's just because I've never heard that. Maybe it's happened. If you ordered Byard to pay a sum to the association, that's fine, but I have a concern on the tail end of your policy, which requires that all the work improvements be done before he gets a CO. I think if you're going to force him to donate money, that's fine, but I think you have to have some flexibility on the other end, because our association meets July, say, July twenty-first. So certainly, he, we are not going to be able to implement any of these improvements probably before he needs a CO. So I hope you can waive some provision of that if he makes the payment to the association. And quite frankly, if any applicant in the future makes a payment to the association, then I think you must at least consider that that's it, that they do not have to demonstrate the improvements are done. I know you want them done, but at some point, if you put the money in the hands of a third party, you can't tie the applicant occupancy, their home, to the conduct of the third party. We'll spend the money well and we'll spend it on improving the road, but I think you need to give consideration.
Just discussion. What, what's the cost of Bell to come in and regrade your road?
Last time it was five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, shouldn't be more. I don't know, it's just, you know, because who's, and once again, I don't, just came up with this, I don't know if you can, if, you know, the best way for, for this to work, because we're looking for the best way for the town and the best way for your little private road community in a way, is, I don't know if we could do a, a CO in contingencies, you know, if, if, you know, say, you know, if you get built this month or next month and then you're waiting for more road, you know, the, the weather to be right to, to improve the roads, being like, okay, yeah, we need to do this and this in the fall or this and this in the spring, but, you know, that you have pictures, you have that backup, you know what I mean? So that we do make it credible per se and, you know, don't just be like, oh yeah, you showed up, you know? I think, you know, we're looking, or the, the board's probably looking for just a, a little bit more of just, you know, how is it going to get improved instead of just the regular road maintenance is the, is the big thing.
We're not able to make it wider because A, there's nothing in the records that I know of that ever disclosed how wide it's supposed to be. So what we're dealing with is simply what the existing traveled way is. So we don't have any right to expand out. So the only thing I can propose is that obviously, we could check and change out a culvert prematurely, maybe spine on that still has a few years left, but deem it failed and replace that. I can think of one candidate. But other than that, I think the only thing we could do is bring in more material to increase and build up the bed.
Which we do every year.
Well, we do more of it.
Yeah.
But that would take planning, because Bell and Flynn comes in and they give us their two days. If we wanted to do a lot more than that two days, I think we would have to plan a year ahead with them and get on that cycle and have them do that more work the following year. So it's not my concern that we couldn't find somewhere to spend the money and above and beyond what we normally do. Okay, but I don't see how reasonably we would get it done, planned, get the contractor in and done for someone needs a CO.
Well, I mean, something that you could do also on that is, okay, you know, who's, you know, there, there's no clerk of the works there, you know, and a UPS truck comes in, screws up the road, or a concrete truck, actually the foundations board, but, you know, you get the big lumber trucks in there, or somebody parks on the side, they go off. I mean, would it be unreasonable to ask that, you know, if Bell and Son came out after the project or nearing the end of the completion of the project, that, you know, they regrade a section of the road? You know what I mean? Because then it's like, sir, bro, comes in like it never happened. You guys, you guys have an extra, you have an extra grade in there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, an extra grade on the road never really hurts.
Well, everything you said you're right. It's just getting Bell and Flynn to do it. I'm not sure I could. They give us those few days in the spring, and if we're not ready, they might have to move on to jobs for the summer and we might not see them back. So yes, you're right, we can always do work later. It's, I can't say we'd have Bell and Flynn.
Well, and I mean, that would probably be up to your association. I mean, if that's the one guy, I'm a loyal Doyle guy too, you know? Once I use one guy, you know, if I have a great experience with him, I want to keep him doing the rest of my work. But where this is a unique situation and might cause for some, you know, unique measures and being like, all right, well, you know, we've been so good to Bell and Son, you know, maybe they could be good to us. And, you know, instead of doing the two days and bringing in tons of gravel, they just do a regrade and maybe bring in, you know, a one ton full. Because that, that's may, may what be needed, you know? That, that's what I'm getting at, just, you know, because what if there's other, you know, concerned citizens down McDaniel's Shore Drive being like, oh, you know, that's going to get rutted out, you know, with the trucks going in and out, you know? Granted, those people aren't here, they may be out there, who knows? But, you know, just trying to keep everybody happy and the peace of mind, that's, that's what I was going to add.
I was going to, I was going to say, you've already agreed, if there's damage to the road, you'll repair that.
Yes, sir.
Well, at least that construction part of it.
Right.
And I don't anticipate any, the build will happen in five days. The building is post and beam and structurally insulated panels. The building goes up in five days and air out of it. And-
Passive home?
Pardon me?
Passive home?
Passive. I'm not quite sure.
It'd be like a net zero home because the insulation-
I'm certainly going to give that a try. Yes, sir. And there will, I've gotten a variance to install a pole mounted solar array as well. It's going to be a really energy efficient house. It's not a huge McMansion. I'm just adding one floor to a thirty by thirty. Nobody behind me, I won't block anybody's view of the lake. And as I said, I don't anticipate any damage to the road during the construction period. They're not doing any earth moving. As I said, I'm using the same foundation, the same septic system, the same well. And, and it'll go quickly, very quickly. And I will swear on my parents' grave, I will repair any damage that's done. And, you know, if, if we, if you decide that indeed that there is, you want me to make an extra financial contribution, I'm happy to do that. But I said, I would hope it would go to the road association so they could prioritize it. And when new things come up that need, we needed some gravel here or there, they think, they can, they have the ability, which they do now actually, to respond to that. And there is, and there's also some text in here about the waiver, and it, it says it should not, a waiver should not in any way alter the character or threaten public health. It certainly won't by giving me a waiver, nothing's going to change there. And I don't believe that the spirit of this policy will be violated by you giving me a waiver. The repairs will still get done, the improvements will still get done. And then giving me a waiver would, I think, do justice. This is a big loss to an individual with questionable gain for, for public as a whole. And finally, the, the, the project, my project's not going to diminish property values. It, it should actually, if anything, it should actually increase property values. And there'll be more property tax money too for the town. It's, it's all a win-win for everybody, I think. And I've been doing my part, more than my part actually, and I don't mind doing that. I'm only seventy-four, but I can't do it forever, but we got younger people coming around and, and they're, they're being, they're great.
That's me, I'm sixty.
You guys look good for thirty, you look good.
Yeah. Anyone else have any, any other public comment? Anyone online want to comment on this?
I mean, if you-
Not appear to be any.
I did not say anything, Mr. Chair.
We'll, we'll close public, you have-
I was just going to say, I, you know, I forgot what I was going to say, actually, sorry.
Okay, close public comment then. Board?
So exactly what are we voting on? We don't have a proposal yet, so I don't know what I'm-
So we have to make a motion before a vote, and a member could incorporate any conditions they think are reasonable in that motion?
Well, I'll try and put something together here real quick. I would like to make a motion to approve the waiver for yard Moser, five oh seven McDaniel's Shore Drive, with the intent that, I don't know. We, we need to figure out how much, how much money, how much sweat equity is, is gonna, you know, we need to put enough on it. We need, we need a number so that way we know what's going to improvements, because yes, this is a particular case, but, you know, it's caught in between the, the merge of the years, but-
I feel like you need to come back another time with an actual-
Well, I, I, let's try and do, let's-
..............................................................................
I, that's why I'm here, is to get suggestions and get a little bit of-
Let me come back next week and tell us.
Well, I-
When's, when is that going to come with your delivery?
Pardon me?
When are they going to come with the delivery of your home?
April, this month, the twenty-fifth.
We meet on the twenty-eighth. And, you know-
I, I would be happy to, you know, because-
Ask the chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead. The, the six hun, the six hundred dollars for the trees to take down. I would be okay with, with paying a, a full year's worth of the, the road, was it five or six thousand dollars that it cost us last year for Bell and Flynn? With the, with, excuse me, with the stipulation that it be used for road improvements? Is that, is that, does that be-
Proposal.
Is that it?
The proposal, hey! Come on, baby!
You're going to make a motion?
Before you make a motion, I, I need to be clear that you can't require a monetary contribution to the road association, because the building inspector needs something to verify that it was completed. And what the road improvement plan says is that the road improvements, the money needs to go towards road improvements, that the building inspector can say have been completed. And because as was indicated, we can't, there's no way for the town to ensure that money was spent for the improvement of a road unless it's done. And I know there was a conversation earlier about it might delay the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. The select board discussed that at length when the policy was set and recognized that some of these requirements might lengthen the process for somebody building on a class six and private road. The unfortunate role of the select board in a situation like this is that statute gives you the authority to authorize the issuance of permits on class six and private roads, period. What this board has said is we want improvements to these roads before we continue issuing permits. The only way that we're going to make things better is if we do incremental improvements over time. Some communities don't issue any permits on class six and private road. If you want to build, you can't, period, unless it's upgraded to town standard. Some other communities, you don't have to do anything. What the select board has done is you have to do something, but it has to be specific. So we can't just say pay five thousand dollars to the road association. It can be, you have to, you know, you have to do, you have to add the, the material and the amount of five thousand dollars with a road construction company, but that has to be completed. And the policy says that evidence has to be provided before the certificate of, certificate of occupancy is issued. So keep that in mind if you craft a motion.
I have some questions.
Yes, please.
Do you guys have a spot down on McDaniel's Shore Drive where you guys can dump some gravel? So when the time comes, you do need it, because then you guys can purchase gravel. Can I see the purchase of gravel as a road improvement?
The place is private property, it's owned by the man who does our winter maintenance. It's where we stores sand, where we stores our stone. So I can't say he can't store gravel there. I'm just nervous to commit him. But yes, I see what you mean, buying and stockpiling material is a way to ensure we're going to do some-
Trying to make it, make the most sense of it.
That, imagine if I can get it piled in one of these two places.
Because there's, there's no, there's no area on your property since you have such a small window.
Yeah.
You could ask those guys.
You can slide over a little bit so anyone who's watching-
Well, some, if you, if you make a move for certain, you are-
Just keep moving, guys. Keep, keep rolling.
Just a question.
Could you give your name?
Sure. Ingrid Ditchik, five seventy-one-
Thank you.
Could, could Mr. Moser perhaps pay for the grading of Bell and Flynn this year? And then the association's fees open to a contingency fee for down the road? So for something specifically, would he be paying for the grading this year?
What, mine's, what time of year?
Well, it happens in the, in the-
What, what's the question?
-mud season is over, usually.
So I wanted to win that grading, like you said.
Typically, it's done mid-May, every mid-May. It may be a little early this year.
Because what I was trying to suggest, everybody saying that you come there, I just spoke with the chair, the chair said-
Proposal.
Proposal, yes, that's it. I was saying that if we were to, my question is before I say anything, what areas get gravel this year?
All of it.
All of it?
Well, we grade the entire road, grader operator will, will have the dump done where he believes he needs it at-
Hey, let me ask you a question. Where does he believe, or do you believe that he will believe needs to be done? Would you, would you be willing to say to me that if he did between lot six and lot twelve, turn around to dump, to regrade and put, put the gravel down on top of that for some not to exceed five thousand dollars, something like that? Would that, would that turn around and pick the trigger?
Yes, sir.
There we go. There we go.
Yes.
That's, and so, so if we specifically say that to get done on there, that by the time your house is done, your electrical work's done and your plumbing's done, when you think that'll be sometime in May?
Um.
Some, some, by here sometime in May, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. So that's sort of take to get the house finished. How's that, Mr. Chairman?
That's a motion. That's a proposal, but.
That's my proposal to the board. It takes care of us where we're taking care of the road. Exactly what we're trying to do to make it safe for us, not only just for everybody, but maybe. And we've shown other people that when they come before us, they can't say, well, when you did this, you forgave the whole ten percent.
Yeah, I will second that.
Because of the condition of the road, it doesn't require ten percent, in my opinion. But I haven't made, I haven't made.
No, no, that's fine. Let me ask a question. Whoever can answer this. The fact that no one, that someone else owns the road confuses me a little. I mean, this seems to me, it makes it a little more difficult since none of the three of, kind of the, however many of you own the road. Only one person owns the road. So what?
So I think human nature is he'd take a contribution to it as well.
I'm sure he would. I, I assume.
So he owns. Not always, and the rest of the people that live down there just have a right of way. This one particular owner has, like physically owns the road and.
I understand that. But does that, how does that change our approach to the maintenance of a road since Mr. Moser isn't, doesn't have any responsibility? I mean, he doesn't own the road.
Or just.
Or the town doesn't own the road.
No, whatever. But that's, but that's not what our actions say has to happen. We know that. We know we can't do anything. You know, it's.
Okay. I like George's proposal, but I'd like to add in there, either added or included in there, the purchase of one culvert, as you guys said that you, you have one and if you guys have one there, you know, I know your neighbor Greg Elliott, little go-to and stuff and lazy Sunday afternoon, you guys would be throwing that in as long as you have it, you know what I mean? If you don't have it, can't put it in, but you know, where you had one that's maybe a couple of years out and no questions. You know, just add that. Purchase it, you know?
Five, you, you said earlier it's about five thousand, fifty-five hundred to the whole road?
Oh, last year was fifty-nine thirty. We brought in extra material because we were using gravel, but that's what we spent last year.
I make a motion that Mr. Moser makes a donation for the road maintenance in the form of five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. And also waiver the peace of having the work, work done prior to the issuance of a CO from the building inspector.
I'm going to buy the culvert. What Connor had mentioned earlier that, you know, we can't ask them to donate the money to the road association. So that's why I put in there, if they bought gravel and they bought some culverts, you know, that's, that's, that's going towards the road that's updated and bought, purchased.
I, I, I am open for any suggestion so that we can have some same thing to have it worked for. I know he is, but he just doesn't like that twenty-three thousand five hundred dollar number. I don't think.
I don't think I would either. I mean, you know, realistically, he's just.
It's ten percent is what we said, so some of the roads will, but on this particular road, he's, he's willing to do that. Can, can we see? Donation, don't?
I actually think, and ma'am, I forget your name and I apologize.
Ingrid.
Ingrid.
Yes.
I think if, from what I'm hearing from the select board, what they're willing to entertain, I think her suggestion is probably the best one. Simply regardless of the dollar figure, make as a condition of the authorizing the issuance of the permit that Mr. Moser is responsible for the annual grading and gravel material that, that improves the road from the prior season, which is already programmed, it sounds like, for after mud season. The specific scope and dollar amount might not be known yet because they'll have conversations with Bell and Flynn about what they think the road needs and whatever else. And so simply indicate that that will be the responsibility of Mr. Moser. In addition to repairing any damage for the road, Jim, you'd mentioned about a culvert. I don't know, you can tie that in. You can say, you know, replace a specific culvert to be decided by the road association. But then there's specific things, Mr. Moser, if, if that's agreeable to him and that's what the board decides, can provide a, a copy of the invoice, the paid invoice to the building inspector that says, here's the scope of improvements that were made. If there's a culvert, here's the culvert that we bought, we put it in on X date. And the building inspector, in conjunction with the road agent, will verify if there was any damage caused during construction that hasn't been and needs to be repaired.
Yes, ma'am.
So I also just, just wanted to say on the record, this road, this neighborhood, we really care about our road, but we really, and we care about our community. So, so if, if fire pays for the grading, you know, everybody is still going to contribute to your road and take on a bigger project. So I mean, I think the spirit of what you are interested in, which is maintaining the road, maintaining associations is really important. And it's going to happen.
Again, I'll close public comment. You can't, but that's, that's okay. I invited you. I invited you.
You invited, that's, that's, yes.
Okay. Yeah, you're my guest.
So I will redo my motion to say that Mr. Moser will do all of those.
That's pretty.
Make a motion to accept the applicant.
Waiver.
Uh, the, the waiver with Mr. Moser paying the two thousand twenty-one spring Bell and Flynn bill with showing a receipt and presenting that to the town building inspector. So we have.
And full work, before evidence of work being done. That, that gives him, that gives him a little time, Frank.
The purchase, if he purchases.
Yeah, purchases stuff, yeah.
It will be done.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
So, yeah, I need to clean that up. The waiver for, I, I make a motion to, for the waiver for Mr. Moser at five oh seven McDaniel Shore Drive. But the applicant must pick up the two thousand twenty-one spring Bell and Flynn bill that the association normally does in addition to buying and replacing a culvert at.
The discretion of the road association.
Discretion of the road association. Am I missing anything else?
Repair damage to the road.
Repair damage to the road if there is any during construction.
Does that agree with you?
Yes, sir, it is. Thank you.
And your esteemed building inspector has his hand up, potentially commenting on whether or not you want to.
There you are, John.
Recorded maintenance agreement.
I've got a hundred percent of it. It's a maintenance agreement. Can you please address that too? So I got something, had that I know I'm addressing at the time of his CO.
Also, I have the motion to, yes, join the, join the road association.
He's in it.
But it's about having a recorded instrument. Do you want, similar to the Freedmans, do you want to have a requirement where either he works with the association to have something recorded at the registry? Or if that's not successful, do something on his own so there's a recorded instrument relative to the maintenance of McDaniel Shore Drive?
That sounds like I'm.
All you're going to do is send a piece of paper, pay, pay, pay the, the fee to have it added to it that you have to belong to the road association. Then whoever buys your house after you went somewhere, if you do, that'll be it. Won't affect you at all, except you gotta pay to have it done.
Right.
That, that's actually not the intended purpose. And I don't, I, I, I would just want to make sure that we're all clear. The, the road, the recorded road maintenance agreement, the purpose of the recorded road maintenance agreement is to make sure that there's a recorded instrument that neighbors can go to and call on and if necessary, take to court pursuant to the statute relative to the proper maintenance of a road. And it's, it's best if that's a road association because that's how it's supposed to work and that's why I encourage people. But we don't have the road association on the hook with an application like, like this. We have an individual property owner. And I, I think the, during the board's discussions about having a road, recorded road maintenance agreement, the board felt that it was necessary and, and the right thing to do at the time of an applicant to make sure that something was recorded. And what that something is, the goal of the whole road association, but if it has to be an individual member and that over time these would collect, we'd be able to point residents to them.
That's exactly where I was coming.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure.
I was just doing it.
Everybody else. So same thing said in a different way. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
The road association and Mr. Moser have together.
It would be easier if they would, I think it would be useful for the whole community, road association would do that.
Same.
But if, but if they won't, which they don't have to at this point, then Mr. Moser, we would like a formal document that guarantees maintaining the road.
So we, we can't require. If he's just, has a right of way, doesn't own the road, then we can't require association to have a maintenance agreement. Aren't our hands tied to that? Like, should we? The other option was, was asking Mr. Moser to supply the road agent or the, John with, with documentation that the job was completed. So that was the other.
Yeah, so the road maintenance agreement has to do with ongoing maintenance. And so the select board had comment from the town's attorney relative to some aspects of the policy and specifically about property ownership and right of way. And basically what she said is at the end of the day, it's, that's between the property owner and whoever they have a right of way to gain access to their property. And most of the time, and I'm not going to say every single one's the same, but most of the time, if you have a right to pass and repass, you have a right to maintain that passage, right? And there, you know, it's actually interesting. You mentioned your, your deed that references no more than five dollars. There is, there is some very interesting language in all of them, but in, in general, that's what is understood in New Hampshire state law within access easement, especially over a road, that you not only have a right to pass and repass, but you have a right to maintain that passage, period. And that couldn't, you know, most of the time, these, these right of ways are established at a certain width. I know the, they had mentioned that it, it isn't necessarily in their deeds, but the, whether it's making the road wider, whether it's adding material, whether it's cutting down trees, installing culverts, if that's what's necessary to main, properly maintain that access, that's generally allowable.
The minimum is that we'll require Mr. Moser to file a road maintenance agreement.
That's, that's what the policy says.
That would be the minimum.
So, so we don't want to hang him up, right? Cause he's got construction at the end of the line. But, you know, where our next meeting passed his start date, can we do it? You know, and if Mr., if we give him, you know, we'll waive this as long as we have a maintenance
Agreement?
Agreement by Friday? That work or no? That could be any.
If you're worried about the timeline, you could waive the requirement that it's before the issuance of a building permit and tie it to their certificate of occupancy. I mean, that's.
That's what everybody's looking for. Like, you know, we need this for, for the green light. So, you know, if he can't produce it right now because he doesn't have a computer with a printer right near him, you know, we can obviously maybe grant him a couple of days to get something together so he can present it to the, the town building official on the board.
Give it to him Thursday.
I don't even think the timeline has to be that tight.
I, I think before the certificate of occupancy.
Well, and it will take, so as you said, mid-May, they, they come out and, you know, they're pretty fortunate with this year. It hasn't been too, too rainy and it's drying out a little quicker than normal, I think.
Rather than have, rather than have the agreement this week.
That would be very difficult.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's, that's a burden.
Burden, the burden's going to be going to the deep, the deep registry. That, that, that's the most difficult part.
Yeah, but if he has a month to do that as opposed to a week.
He is retired.
You don't have chickens yet, do you?
No. Not yet, and not a tractor either.
Okay. As a retired person, I'll agree on this.
Would you like me to read you your proposed motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion, all the credit in the world to the esteemed municipal office administrator. Motion to approve the waiver for a building permit on map one twenty-four lot ten with the requirements that the applicant must pay the road's annual spring regrading, purchase a culvert to be replaced at the discretion of the road association, repair any damage to the road created by construction and record a road maintenance agreement registered deed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Select portion, select person, the negotiator makes the motion, seconded by select person Bailey.
All right. Any other discussion? Yeah, hello, hi.
You feel, you feel good? You don't feel violated, I hope?
No, sir, I do.
No, that's good. That, that was the whole idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Bailey, I thought I said I.
I, I was very hopeful that we could, we could reach a deal or a compromise and, and it seems like we've been able to do that. Thank you for.
Thank you and good luck on your building.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
And, and.
Thank you, neighbors.
It was a shame what you folks had to put up with earlier in the, in the day and I could, I could say that now and it.
Thank you.
I think we all have the same decade in mind. It's a nice town to live in and we want to keep it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time.
A little extra.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda from number six, items A through G.
Been moved and seconded, approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, aye. All right. Appointments. Doning Board of Adjustment. I propose that the hold on Mr. Embry until we can discuss in non-public session secondary to reputation.
I agree.
Sure. Aye.
I'll second. We're going to hear him.
I'm looking at him.
Okay.
You got a second up there. Rob's second.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, aye. Happy L O, aye.
Secochei. You're on the zone, boy.
I know that, I know that. I'll approve it. I haven't seen, everything I've read is only hearsay. There's nothing that. I'll, I'll approve going into non-public to discuss a person.
Right.
Thank you very much.
For reputation. Mantra, aye. Thank you.
See what I have here when I got through reading?
Exactly, I know. Exactly. Okay. Library trustee.
Make a motion to approve the library trustee of Susan Galliello, Sam Ronder and Melanie Haley. Make a motion to accept trustee alternate and two alternates.
I second.
Aye, moving second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Conservation commission.
I would like to make a motion to approve Ken Grossman, Scott Heron and Jenny Stewart to the conservation commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Happy L O, aye.
Aye.
George, aye.
Yeah, I think we only had to do.
Just.
By name.
Yeah.
Do, okay.
Is that, thank, I'll save.
I'd like him, I'd like to make a mo, a motion to approve John Wallace to the locally, every river open advisory committee.
I second it.
It's getting late.
Yes, it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Four to one.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay. Staff report. Mr. McIver.
Thank you. Few items for you tonight. Here we are, first meeting in April, which gives me an opportunity to recognize our April work anniversaries. Similar to March, pretty popular month after the budget's implemented. So it's not uncommon to see a, a grouping of hiring in April as the budget is implemented. Our esteemed police chief, George Joy, started in the town of Arrington twenty-three years ago this month. John Booty in the fire department nineteen years ago.
Uh, John Booty in the fire department 19 years ago. Deb Griffin, uh, an assistant in the town clerk's office has been with the town for 11 years. And the Markowitz, our tax collector, has been with the town for nine years. Chris Eldridge in the fire department, nine years. David Kinnison in the fire department, six years. Tristan Onnesano in the library, a processor library assistant for four years. Cody Guile, fire department, Alex Mopman, program coordinator for patient for two years. And, uh, Henry Resnick, police officer for one year. Uh, so certainly many years of service and hopefully many more continued years of service.
That's a combined 87 years.
Yeah, I love it. I love it. Um, and.
Good job, Jim.
Still counting. So thank you, uh, to all, the tenure of all of our employees. Uh, next, I, uh, wanted to share with the board and, um, the public that I had the opportunity, uh, with both Ms. Capiello and Mr. Gibson to participate in the local official workshop, uh, put on each year by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. It's very productive. I mean, it's a lot of material, but they, um, uh, it led to a lot of good conversations. Um, and I put a copy, I didn't print you a copy, but I put a link to the copy of the PowerPoint. Um, so if anybody had questions about the content discussed, um, happy to, happy to talk about it, but it's a great program. And there's actually a YouTube video link. And so if anybody's interested, um, can share that as well. Uh, additionally tomorrow, we have the New Hampshire Municipal Association coming to Barrington. They're actually coming to this room. Um, not the public safety building. Or a, um, I, for those of you that don't know, sent out a reminder email late this afternoon. So, um, now you know. Um, and so, um, they're going to be doing a specific to the topic of land use. And I know, um, if you're in the select board or planning to attend, uh, we've invited the planning board in as well. Um, so we're really, really looking forward to that. Uh, next topic is the Green Hill Road Bridge over the Isinglass River. And one additional note from what I wrote in here. Um, the big picture, we're ready to advertise, uh, steel lead times has kind of pushed the schedule out a little bit. I said in here that we were anticipating advertising for a, uh, 2022 or 2023 construction timeframe. Um, the fire chief brought up a very good point with the upcoming replacement of the, um, Washington Street Bridge, the 202 bridge over the Isinglass. Um, might not be a good idea from a public safety and, uh, emergency response standpoint to be replacing both those bridges at the same time. Doesn't really change anything because we weren't really counting on the bridge being, the Green Hill Road Bridge being replaced in 2022. We're just leaving the option up just in case. Uh, and so that was a pretty easy decision. Um, and so we're going to advertise, um, with the blessing of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, we're going to advertise planning on to 2023. We're still going to get the process going. We have to, uh, line up the contractor, um, before July this year, uh, because of the state funds. Um, but that is the update on the Green Hill Road Bridge. Any questions about that?
That makes sense.
Right. Um, 2020.
Make just ensure that we notify the, uh, school department.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they've been in conversation all the way through, um, and we will continue. I appreciate that, uh, that comment. Um.
Liaisons were here. We could have let them know.
Could have been gone a long time ago.
Yes. So, uh, 2022 roadside cleanup, uh, just a reminder, April 23rd. This is the third or fourth year, um, that we, uh, that our, um, transfer station administrator and highway support assistant, uh, has coordinated this public event. Um, one of the exciting things that, uh, kind of spun out of it and following the, the, um, previous path of Dover, um, was a recreation community group focused on picking up trash and they meet, excuse me. They meet monthly, um, and pick up around town. They just did the Stonehouse Forest, which we, um, receive a ton of complaints about, about the trash building up. Um, so if you're interested in more frequently than an annual cl- cleanup, join that group. You can find information in the recreation department, um, and everybody should consider participating in the townwide roadside cleanup on April 23rd. And if you don't participate because you have other obligations, uh, please drive safe. Because there's going to be a lot of people picking up road, uh, picking up trash inside the road. Questions or comments about that one?
Yeah, I have a question. Who's responsible for picking up out there?
George Bailey.
I, I'm, I don't have enough gas.
Um, the state does adopt a highway programs. Um, the, I don't think route nine, I don't think that, uh, there's a sign on route nine, but maybe it's not adopted. Would you like to adopt it?
Hey, maybe.
I'm not, I'm not medically capable.
Maybe the select board should put together.
The, the, um, Earth Day roadside cleanup, uh, they do do some state roads as well. Um, and so it's basically, you know.
We've got to commend these people. They have done a fantastic job here after year. So.
Yeah, Aaron organized it pretty nicely.
That, that place down there, it's open to everybody.
Right.
We had trouble last year talking about trash.
And the major wall, well, it depends on what section of route nine you're talking about, but the Major Waldron Sportsman Association, um, from Aaron has adopted a portion of route nine. Likely the portion of route nine that leads to Dover.
Yeah, there's, there's two down at Lake and everything else is just. Thought that efficient game is supposed to, but it's still, well, they're still bad on the state. Thank you.
Hey, last year at the 23rd, we went down Bramston and then we just made the turn and started up nine and we loaded up our bags. Going up nine faster than they're coming all the way down Bramston.
Yeah. But then it, I'm not going to say it anymore. Let Ted go.
Okay. Municipal Office Administrator Puddle.
Yes, um, for your view and signature, I have two timbered pens. I think you can all sign those. Um, already six votes that were previously approved this meeting. Those are going to be electronic. And then, um, uh, Chairperson Mansky, we're going to have two private road agreements. You'll have those in your email inbox.
Thank you.
Does any requires a hard signature?
You've already signed it.
I saw. All business. MMH, M A, M N A N H. Municipal.
Management and Sanitation of New Hampshire.
Yeah. Fellowship application. What do, what do we vote on to do it?
Well, the last meeting, you, um, asked me to prepare an application, uh, which I've done and it's in your packet. And, um, the, how we had left it at the last meeting is that you'd review this and consider if you wanted to move forward or not. Um, and so I reckon that would be your decision to make.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
To move forward with it? Yeah.
Yeah. Is anyone, any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Yeah.
Master plan chapter updates. That's another one that we talked about last time.
We didn't talk about this. You and I talked about it, uh, prepping for this meeting. Um, but this is, so the master plan chapters, um, we've been on a schedule trying to update one annually. Um, and so we budgeted $12,000, uh, for the help of Stratford Regional Planning Commission to help the planning board through the process of updating the master plan chapter. They help, uh, facilitate listening sessions and working with the community. And the master plan chapter we had planned to update this year was the land use chapter, which is a really important one, especially, um, with residents that are concerned about future development and zoning and things like that. So, um, that's what we had planned on in conversation with Stratford Regional Planning, the new planner, Nessa Price. Um, she had, uh, learned from Stratford Regional Planning that they had a grant to fund 75% of transportation projects. And so our transportation chapter hasn't been updated since 2004. And so, um, they worked out and, um, figured that within the budget that we have approved, we can work on both land use and the tra- uh, transportation and master plan chapters. And so it's, um, it's properly budgeted and it was kind of the plan to do master plan chapter anyways. Uh, but we wanted to get it before the whole board since it's a little bit of a change adding in transportation. Think it's a great opportunity and it's funded 75%. Uh, the work of Stratford Regional Planning is funded 75% from a grant that we don't even have to worry about.
Yes.
Scott, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town planner to sign an agreement with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission and consultant to update two master plan chapters using $11,398, which was profitably budgeted for this purpose.
I second it.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye. You're good.
Uh, new business. Highway department, four day work week. Yeah, the memo.
Makes sense to me. Longer days. We do it every year.
I didn't have any concerns.
No. We don't have to vote on this, right? Just discussion?
So as I indicated in my report, um, I, when Mark approached me about it, we did a hiatus last year. Um, in recent memory, the select board has been intimately involved in this decision-making. Um, based on this, the road agent's job description and my job description, I don't necessarily think the select board needs to decide the work schedule of, uh, the highway department employees. Um, but I didn't feel comfortable making that decision, given the history where the select board has involved, been involved in the decision-making. Uh, so I talked about the chair, if you want to make a motion and, you know, authorize proceeding or just acknowledge that you think it's a good idea and you don't feel you need to be involved in the decision-making, either would be fine. Um, and we can proceed.
I would like to make a motion to approve the highway department, uh, four day work weeks at discretion.
Road agent.
At the road agent's discretion.
Has changed in policy over the years?
Is it? Because I know last year we had, you know, the COVID and whatnot. We're like, hey, let's go to five days in case, but, you know, and I also think that this brings a, a good boost of morale for the guys as well, knowing that, hey, if they, they bust their ass, you know. Or, but I should say, um, if they, they can earn an extra day.
I don't mind doing that, but I think it should be done on a yearly basis. Say in case something comes up, in case the town expands, I don't think it's, uh, the town's at interest. So to, to make it permanent, I think we just should turn around and do it on a yearly, continue on a yearly basis.
So I make a motion to approve the highway de- uh, department four day work week for the 2021 or, uh, 2022, um, summer.
Second. Thank you.
We have to go to, I don't actually think we need to be involved.
No.
So.
You never know what comes up as we head.
I think it wouldn't hurt if we actually had a vote on this. That, that gives you, that gives you some cover when people come. If someone says, why are those people not working?
Yeah, there's a dead deer in the road.
They were, they have it on call schedule. But anyways, it, it, sounds like there's motion and a vote. Motion and a second, though?
Yep. Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yep. Posed.
We'll plan to bring it back annually.
Yeah, I think that's probably.
Have some additional direction from the board.
I need to work on the consent agenda at some point.
Keep.
Okay. Public safety building, expansion, renovation, feasibility study.
I'll invite the police chief up. You have a, a letters report. He's got, um, a couple of people with him. He was one who you don't know, but.
So I guess I'll start by apologizing. I don't want to come in and go in like that. We had a couple of priority calls, one of which resulted in an arrest. So I do apologize for failing in the back. It also puts me kind of in a, not as prepared places as I would like to be. Y'all know Deputy Chief Brooks, young man approaching now is David Thurston. Uh, Mr. Thurston, get to him a little bit too, um, was our intern and is basically everything that I'm going to talk about tonight. This is this young man's work. So I'll be talking some of it. If you see me look at young Mr. Thurston, I'm just going to let him talk to you if the board has no. I'm hoping we don't have to do much talking at all. You have what we have and it's really a cut and dry presentation. Uh, we are at a point now, we did the build out back in 2019. Everybody knew that was going to be a Band-Aid. It's time to rip that Band-Aid off because operationally we're having challenges again. It's not just us. I, I, I wish we're, we're here, uh, but we have had discussions with Chief Walker as well. This isn't just a police department build out. This is a true public safety build out, uh, needs of us and the fire department. TA McIver and us had the conversation today. I expect building last, the next 20 years. Do I expect that the needs will be met in 20 years? I don't know. That's up to you folks. Um, you guys get to decide where Barrington's going, I can go. So, um, Mr. Thurston did a complete analysis of space needs, just as TA McIver did for the town hall. We didn't give that to you because it's guestimation. Uh, that's why we're coming to you now so that we can get the engineers involved, see what we can do, see what we can actually do up over and whatnot. To give us a true idea of where we can go and meet the spatial needs for us and the fire department.
And so the specific request is to appropriate $25,000 for engineering. Uh, and that's in the report, but in, in a, it's all public record, but I think it's good for the conversation. Um, and so that's the specific ask of the select board. And I want to be clear that none of us expect a decision from the select board tonight. It's listed on the agenda as discussion. So certainly if there's additional information or, um, if you want to talk about it again, um, to consider other, um, facts, uh, that's, the, the time is on our side. Uh, but this is the start of the process.
If we could go forward with this, what's the timeline? How long would it take to get?
Josh, give us any idea?
We, we had entered into a conversation with Josh Buchard with CMA engineers. In that packet that you have, um, he fully intends to have a product to us in preparation for the possibility to have a warrant on, or article on the warrant for next year. If all the pieces fall into place.
We're looking for a couple of years. Begin. We would begin work within a couple of years.
We're, we're happy to let you folks just decide the timeline.
Appreciate that. We could, we could start, if everything ticked right off, we have a warrant for next year and then that passes. Then, excuse me, we'd go to instruction beginning proper next year. Yes, please.
What size is recommended?
We don't have that. We, we don't have any of that yet, sir. Um, again, that's.
Then we got, uh.
I, I, I can give you the guestimation that we have. Um, the net square footage would be another 6770. Now it's for PD only, if I'm not mistaken.
So that's to be added on with your current?
Yes, and.
So you're, you're saying a building right around 10,000?
And that's just the PD side of the house.
I understand that, sir. That's.
Yeah, a shy attempt.
Is the question I'm asking is, if we look at it, one aspect of it is if we move the police department out to accommodate, uh, more than, uh, 10,000 population, and we allow that to slide over to the fire department, would that save us? That's the question.
So.
Say, would, would that save us money? And if so, where would we get the other piece of properties? Because I'm, I'm leading to the fact is that, uh, this group we have is going through, uh, looking at, help me out, call on the name of the group that, uh.
Town lands committee.
Town lands committee going through and just doing a fantastic job for the taxpayers, you know? We should have some suggestions of saying, hey, let's just wait, we'll hold on to this and see if we can't use it, if it should get approved.
So were those things looked at? We did evaluate moving off site. Um, we sat with Ms. Capiello for a bit. We talked about this lot over here, maybe going under the library, next to the library, with the library. Um, again, the, the dump, can't call it the dump, the transfer station, um, lot was a possibility. Initially, we'd looked at the town hall lot, which won't support the police department. Our preference, in all candor, deputy chief's mind, and, and again, I'm going to speak for Rick, even though he's not here. All of our preference would be to stay together in one house. Uh, public safety to me, and again, I'm not going to say for Rick, we should be in one building where we can work efficiently together. Uh, Barrington has a very unique relationship between police and fire. It's good. It doesn't happen everywhere. Um, that continues if we live together. If we have a ice storm, mass casualty drill, anything like that, it's easier if we can all work out of the same building in the same place. And it looks feasible in talking to Josh that we could build out the current building up over to meet both fire and police needs. That would make me happy. I would like to stay at 774 Franklin Pierce Highway. It's a good location for us. Um, if we can stay there, I'd like to. Happy to, you know, talk about the lands committee if they've got outside areas where they think we'd fit. But if I had my druthers, my personal preference would be to stay at 774 Franklin Pierce Highway.
What about the wetlands? How's the wetlands going to affect this?
I, I, I do not know. Um, and when they. When they looked originally in 2019 at additions and whatnot, they were looking at going towards Kate Road out. And that seemed feasible back then, based on the information that I recall. Um, up is never a problem as far as that goes, and I would hope that we could go west. Up is never a problem, as far as that goes, and I would hope that we could go west as well. But I don't know, until Mr. Bouchard gets done with engineering, I, I don't have those answers.
That's the purpose of this juncture, Mr. Bay.
And then, and then at the very end, how long do you anticipate if this were to be approved? And will, how, how many years before we would have to make some changes? Because if not, we, this is a trick question.
I know.
Because once you turn around and get to that timeframe, I'll probably be in a box then.
Both of us.
That time, now you say, who keeps, who keeps there and who moves?
Yep. I would hope that we can get fifteen plus years out of it for both of us. But again, I don't know what's going to happen to Barrington in the next decade. If it goes the way it's going now, we may not last that long. From a common sense standpoint, if we build out and we have to separate because we get too big, makes sense to leave fire there because we're building base for apparatus, they've got bigger stuff than we do, quite frankly, and more of it. So if you're going to move off campus, you don't build another building for all the big stuff, you build a building for the little guys. And we're still the little guys as far as stuff goes.
About auxiliary, uh, firehouse, you see, that, that's the thing you hit, because once you get, it's a heck.
Big project.
It is, I, I don't want to be in your shoes.
You don't mind, quite frankly.
Let's just go. Couple of concerns is, or just, you know, where, where are we going to get this, this money from?
Incident fund.
The incident fund?
So that's what I've proposed, it's certainly the select board's decision, so the incident fund is, you know, a properly budgeted place for things you don't budget for. Um, and so we have fifty thousand dollars available in the incident fund, um, it would eat up, you know, half of it, um, so.
With that, that, my, my other question is, since this is a police and fire thing, um, in a way, I mean, would, would the fire department have, uh, any available funds that they would want to throw at it as well, since it's kind of, you know, working together, same team?
I don't believe that Rick or my budget would sustain withdrawing fifty thousand dollars for engineering.
No, 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 not, not the, the full fifty, but the, let's, let's, let's pool it in together instead of reducing, you know, the incident fund down to half, you know, if, if Rick's got five thousand from one of the little funds that he always has going, you know, hey, you know.
I am not going to speak for Rick Walker.
Well, yeah, just bringing it up, I promise.
I don't know, if it's fifty, we gotta vote.
I thought we said twenty.
This is twenty five, the ask is twenty five, fifty is the total, we're going to reduce by fifty percent.
Hope it's a fifty. So I got confused, I thought it was fifty, fifty, well, I just heard fifty somewhere, I thought it was fifty thousand.
TA McIver said we had incident fund.
We have, and then he's asking.
Twenty five.
For twenty five, that would be half of it.
Right.
I know, I know, ARBA funds can't be used to build a new building, it could be used for an engineering study, right? There's money there, if you don't want to delete the.
And there have to be a warrant to.
That would, and you don't need a warrant for ARBA funds.
Correct.
Well, for either of those.
Either, either.
Correct.
Discretion.
One thing to do is we could split it between the two.
Yeah, really just.
I think we could find twenty five thousand dollars, I think it can be found.
Oh, no, I know, I'm just proposing ideas to, to come together, I mean, so we're not, you know, running down, you know, one halfway, and I don't know how much is in the ARBA account.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Okay, um, so in, in the twenty twenty one operating budget, the, the surplus, uh, the unexpended appropriations totaled almost seven hundred thousand dollars. And that's a, you know, in my opinion, that's a good thing, because what that tells me is that department heads in town only spend the money that they need to. They'll ask for what they expect they'll need, but if they don't end up needing it, they turn it back to the taxpayers, period. And so what that means with the bottom line budget is, you have, the select board inevitably has additional surplus towards the end of the year to identify priorities. The budget committee historically has scoffed at the separate incident fund, because their perspective is, you always have three percent surplus anyways, because we can't under appropriate, or we'd have to go to the Department of Revenue Administration for an emergency appropriation.
Right, you're getting those.
So. As town administrator, it doesn't give me heartburn if the select board identifies this as a priority. It doesn't give me heartburn to spend down half of the incident fund, because I expect not only with ARPA, but as we get towards the end of the year and we identify additional funds, I think there'll be plenty of surplus if the select board identifies other priorities. Something else you have to keep in mind about both the police department and fire department budget is, we budgeted through the budget process, we budgeted a full, uh, we budgeted seventy five percent of a full-time employee. And we did that because the police department and fire department both have individuals who I think deployed today, um, to, to go overseas. And you're right, yeah, and then probably at the moment airborne. Um, but, so we, so that's kind of built in surplus, I mean, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and the select board did that on purpose, because they could come back and we could need those funds. Um, so it doesn't give me heartburn about spending down, if it's the select board's priority to do this project.
Well, public safety is number one.
Really?
We gotta protect the, the people in this town. You know, unfortunately, Barrington's blowing up right now, we have more units going in, there's gonna be more people, and unfortunately, that's, we're gonna have more incidents.
Look at those houses across from the middle school, I would hate, I would, I would like to ask, how many of those do they have a consent to rent already?
Not quite.
No, probably most of them.
Pardon?
Probably most of them.
You're thinking if you move in, you're going to have to plow, you know?
The thing that, the thing that really bothers me, this whole project is, you know you need to stay together, do we need to turn around and think about going to a larger piece of property? And then building for both of us? There's just a lot of pros and cons. And the way the traffic's coming south and going north, some of those southerly nor, northern travelers aren't who we want, you know? And we just talked about last meeting, talking about money now, what we're going to do to, uh, make satisfy, satisfy some of our employees so they don't leave us. That's another reason why, I'm just going to tell you, is I brought this facilities count on that too. I got that right here, it's, it's right here for the, for what we already talked about. The scary thing to, to see what we have to do to protect our people, I mean.
Well, and I think protecting them by keeping them with a new facility.
Yep.
Would be more inspiring, being like, oh yeah, you know, Barrington, they got the new PD, you know, it might have.
And they're paying a decent wage, they're not near the end of it, that's.
Which brings us to our formal strategic planning.
It does, but then, you know.
I don't, I don't see a problem with this.
This compensation study we did is, it's twenty twenty, we're, we're getting to twenty, and let me tell you, opened my eyes up, I'm just talking to the board, I'm just keep myself talking, but it, it really enlightened us, it really did, we, we, short, so. There's a lot coming, you know, so we have to really think about, do we want to separate, stay, and I'm, I'm saying this to you.
Yep.
It's, I'm not advocating separation, but.
Happy to sit down and have the discussion.
Taking care of anything, you know, and then same aspect, we got people that want a new library too.
It's. And cognizant of that fact, that's why we had the discussion.
Forty nine percent, but, you know, we, we have, we have these needs. Not once, we have our needs coming to us, and we really, all of us, all the departments have been great in doing it, we just got to continue with it. So, that, that's my two cents.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Close with the three.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So if we make a decision tonight, does that affect your tomorrow, or can we bring this up at the next?
Let's just reach out to Josh, but you're not going to hurt my feelings at all if you wait till the next meeting, it's a matter of two weeks.
I suggest we, we take, uh, the two weeks to digest.
Consume a little bit.
Do you like additional information?
Yes, do, do you need anything from PD as far?
This time.
I mean, I don't think in two weeks we're going to have a problem, George talking about that bigger picture, where we are in, you know, fifteen years, we're not, I won't have any.
Yeah, and again, the feasibility, this is a feasibility study. We don't know the details of this, but it'd be, it might be useful to have some, if Rick has some information, it might be useful.
Yeah, and, you know, getting a little bit of Rick's input might help too.
Because I think, I think your point is very well taken, even if, even if not physically present together, although I think that has a lot of utility, um, you obviously have to have some sort of coordination, get really close coordination.
I'd like to be able to get back on the fire department without walking around again.
Exactly, if you insist.
The feasibility is bringing into all this discussion, of the bird's eye view, right, you know, other locations, all adding.
What is physically possible where we are, if this is even, right, worth discussing further.
As a point of comparison, it was recently in the news, like, three days ago, that the city of Portsmouth is spending one point four million dollars doing a feasibility study on whether or not to improve the police station or build a new police station. One point four million dollars to.
Just for the study.
Just for the study. So, anecdote, so we will loop in the fire chief, um, with some specific comments, uh, both Chief Joy and I have talked to him, um, and he supports the, the bigger picture, I think it was his idea to go above the base, anyway.
That study, can we get, can we say available for us?
Sure, it'll be once it's done.
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
We're trying to spend, yeah.
And not be here till eleven o'clock.
Right now, the only thing that's been accomplished is Mr. Thurston's homework. Uh, once we get the feasibility study, that's going to be, again.
Understood.
Not going to leave that for the intern.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
What I'm hearing is we're going to make, wait to make that decision till the next meeting, and the select board wants to hear from the fire chief.
Correct.
Uh, chief, you may have.
Oh.
If, if the board will indulge, um, so I was going to circle back to Mr. Thurston. Um, Mr. Thurston's been with us for months now, he did an incredible job on this work product. Uh, Mr. Thurston, should he accept the offer, it's going to be your next full-time police officer.
Hey, oh, right.
Little trouble understanding.
Good.
And, and this was your, um, police department, this new position that was approved in the budget, so the hiring process started after the budget passed, um, and, and this was hopefully the happy conclusion of that process, so we're really excited.
If y'all didn't scare my weight.
We're, we're getting close to three years, and you know I'm going to be gone, but so, you know, you could have that study group there down at the range, that sure would be.
Was that George Bay, you run again that?
Excuse me. I'm too old to run here already.
I'm not going anywhere because I was asked to hang out.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Here we go. About the formal strategic planning session.
May I, uh, may I ask, um, where, where it is so late, I mean, do we think that this is going to be a big ticket item? That's what I'm getting at.
What do you think? Uh, no, I don't think we need to do it right now, honestly, since I was looking to get from the board, but just if you think it's a good idea, and I can collect more information, start looking at dates and facilitators, um, the chair and I have talked about it some. So i- if you're willing to, to nod and say, hey, do that extra work, we like the idea, we'd like to do it, um, I don't think it probably needs much conversation.
Sounds great.
I'd like to see an updated compensation study, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, that's a separate conversation, yep.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing it in here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think if things are projected out, we need to get another strategic, yeah, but at least let's look at.
And so I'll have more information back, and we'll start looking at dates, um, the chair and I talked about maybe taking one of our summer meetings and not doing business at the meeting, but maybe doing a future planning session then, so we'll circle back to that, um, and I appreciate the information.
Okay. Mr. Capello?
Uh, reports from planning board.
Return.
Um, so we did the two classics roads and two business applications, one is rock iron repair, that's going to go in on one twenty five line, it's a commercial welding and repair facility, it's only for storage of equipment because they do their work on site, and it's only for employees, and they plan to build one building and then a second building in the future, they have a few details to work out. Um, but they got some conditional approval on that, and then we have a Barrington Business Saint Holair um, that's planning a seventeen thousand plus square foot expansion at the ridge at Green Hill, um, subdivision over by the town hall. And that's also going to start with one building, the seventeen thousand square foot, and future add a second, uh, smaller building. Um, and again, there were some, uh, minor changes that they need to, um, deal with, but, but things like those will.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Gibson? For the conservation, uh, commission, first meeting is this Thursday, I spoke to Ken Gressman to orient and, and, and get ready for that. Um, this past Saturday, uh, one, one of my committee reports, and the Barrington Historical Society meeting. Uh, that was their first meeting, twenty two, I've been a member for, for several years, um, and they're excited about the planning that's going into the tricentennial celebration. And in specifically June eleventh, it's a Saturday, will be Barrington History Day, and, um, it's coinciding with the barbecue, and so, um, just to have on your radar, the historical society has got a lot of things planned for this tricentennial.
Yeah, I went, I drove by, and I've never seen so many cars, or I thought they were giving away something.
It was a joint meeting with the Stafford Historical Society as well.
Okay.
And they, they're doing some neat work with the, um, the cemetery too, and getting some historical markers up and stuff, so.
On which we.
An endorsement, which the chair will sign.
Sakoshia?
Okay, um, well, super excited, uh, Jesse and, uh, the rec department, um, have been doing great work and actually working with Connor and our new town planner for their new grant that they want to go after. Um, what they would do is kind of, um, at the front of the schools, it slopes down, and what this grant does, I think it's a fifty percent match, and they're looking to bring in Phil to, to raise it up, to get a flat surface, and ultimately have like a, uh, actually somewhere where there's a field and a pavilion, and, um, I think a lot of cool things, uh, their wall project and plumbing is complete. The Easter egg hunt, uh, was successful, and they're just getting ready for summer camps, that's what's going on at the rec.
That feeling is not going to affect the library, is it?
I haven't talked to Phil.
No, from the map, it looked like it was right behind the rec building, right?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, yeah, it's like, it's out there where it slopes.
That's wetlands over there too.
I'm sure they have.
No, no, I'm just, just, just for conversation, that's all.
I'm not, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
My, my meeting's in next week.
Okay, uh, school board met last Tuesday, uh, the, uh, interim, uh, interim superintendent is Deanna Ray, she's currently the, um, uh, student service director. Uh, they're pretty, they're a middle school principal and the student service director. We did talk a little bit about possible, uh, joint meeting with the school board, probably sometime this summer. They're going with school and always get. Something I thought would be pretty useful. Transfer station committee hasn't met yet, but we're going to meet shortly, Aaron's getting some information, and ABC will meet in fall. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, second section, session of public comment, limited to fifteen minutes. There doesn't appear to be many people here, uh, so if there's anyone online that would like to speak in public session, limit three minutes, so raise your hand, if you're on telephone.
Star six.
Star six, thank you.
Seen anything come through virtually, Mr. Chair?
Right. I don't either, anyone here want to say anything? Good. All right, uh, I suppose we should, uh, end the public, uh, comment section. Hey, uh.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to enter non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety one dash A three two for the purpose of personnel and reputation.
Okay.
Capello, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You back lot?
We are back live and we voted to come out of non-public session into public session.
I'll move to end this session.
And if to seal the minutes first.
I make a motion to seal the minutes indefinitely.
Non-public session.
The non-public session.
Second, sorry.
Aye. Capiello, aye.
Okay, who's second? There, there's that second, okay. Now, Capiello, aye. Aye, Gibson, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrae, aye. Sakosha has used from the public session. Now we can have.
I move that we close the meeting.
Second, second. All those in favor? Okay, no objections.